This conference will now be recorded.
You got that priority.
Alive, I bet.
But I ordered one.
What I'd like to be is to have you just have one here.
Yeah.
Do you need to go?
No.
That's bottom line.
You'll stand and join us with the Pledge of Legions.
Our Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. We have a full agenda today, so we'll rock and roll as fast as we can. Any changes, Bruce, to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have the second amended or the third version of the agenda I put out on the table for this morning. It's on the website and the drive as well. You'll know it if you look at the page, page three at the, I'm gonna get the right one myself. Um, at eleven fifty, that part is underlined, I denominated that so it could be separated. Otherwise, if you look at the back, the version date is seven thirty-five, so that's the final version.
Okay.
No changes.
Anyone else?
Approve this amendment.
A second, the motion is second on table. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Declare conflicts today. Moving on, regular meeting minutes from July twelfth.
Motion to approve the greatest minutes in the state.
I'll second that.
Moving up.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Bill, any questions? Go ahead, Randy.
The emergency management, or excuse me, search and rescue purchase, was that budget?
As far as I know, yes.
Yes.
The, um, CTD?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it was in capital expenditures budget for this year.
Was it that much?
Um, it's a couple thousand dollars first.
Okay.
But the weather was bad, they thought it was gonna be around thirty thousand, but it didn't make that.
So your budget will, will take that hit.
Hopefully. We told them to pull it up a little.
Hmm.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anyone else? Any change in motion, opposed, bills? A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Personnel.
We have, um, a new, a new hire. Fifty Mackey is, um, equalization appraiser one at eighteen seventy-one effective on August first of twenty twenty-two, and this is to replace the employee that resigned last month.
Jim Hossen, if there's any questions.
Go ahead.
What is the employee waiver needed? It says there's an employee waiver needed, manual waiver needed.
Oh, boy, I didn't know I marked that, sorry.
I mean, I mistake on that, on the thing.
That's probably my mistake, no, yeah.
So no waivers needed?
Yeah, sorry.
You just like drawn certain?
Move, move to approve with the modification that no employee manual waiver needed.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Well, certainly.
Did you have a lot of applicants?
No.
Okay, thank you.
One and a half.
Maybe.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anything else? Travel requests?
Um, I have a travel request, Renee is here also, if you have any questions for her. It is for Paul Thompson, Renee Larson, Bart Baker, Ken Hawkeye, and J.D. Geigel to attend the South Dakota Emergency Management Association Conference in here in South Dakota from September twelfth through the fifteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second, the motion is second on table, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Who was the second in there?
I was. We have reminder county convention, September twelfth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, here in South Dakota. Go ahead.
Um, I have, uh-
I'll be, Mr. Chairman, I'll be attending.
Okay.
Associations of my rooms.
I have three work comp, or not work comp, volunteer fire members that need to be approved for insurance purposes. Douglas Beck, um, Leif Vae, and Mark Vanderlinde. Two are from Nemo and one is from Brownsville.
Just for work comp, they can make a record of it.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
That's all I have, chairman, first.
Okay. One signature, we'll move on, yes. Yeah.
That guy, yeah, I got him, that's from, for Brownsville.
Okay.
I have that as part of the, the three.
Dean is unable to be with us. But he was trying to do, um, the go-to, are you there, Brian? Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I second hear you.
Okay. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good morning.
What do you have for us this morning?
Well, I would initially defer to Dr. Alka and Brenda, see if they can't carry some of the load for me.
We will do that, Brian.
Go ahead, Mr. Alka.
Mr. Chairman, one thing to talk about is for the groundbreaking ceremony, which is scheduled for August, Thursday, August eleventh, at eight o'clock. RCS is coordinating that on your behalf, and they're wondering, I want to confirm, uh, who of all the commissioners that plan on being there that day? They're ordering shovels, um, so, um-
Can we bring her over?
And, and I need to hear, Greg, are you planning on, are you going to need a shovel?
I, you offered, I will, I will be there.
I, and so, um, and I need to hear back from Shelley Dragoo about shovels, um, so anyway, that will-
Is that a budget item?
I know, I feel like-
I don't know.
I need no shovel.
Yeah, I'm not getting a shovel myself, um.
I will be there, anyone else?
I'm gonna try, I'll, it's Thursday, a rally.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Right away at eight o'clock.
Mr.?
Yeah, I'll try.
Do we take our shovels home?
Yeah, you get the keep on my page.
Bruce, what?
I'm gonna do a, um, a better reminder for that Monday to do a, a notice of quorum, yes, thank you.
Okay.
And otherwise, um, I think Toby is on the line as well, I'll defer to Brenda here, but, um-
Okay.
A lot, a lot of this discussion, probably, it doesn't necessarily, what you're gonna hear relates to the share, but it kind of started there and then kind of goes from there, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, so I guess I'll just start, um, um, kinda wanted to talk a little bit about the assignment of funds, um, of that five million dollars that, um, was, or, what's the word, sort of planted by-
Sort of planted.
By ARPA funds due for their county services that we were able to use, so that gives us that, um, five thousand, and then I was just wondering if you would, five million, yeah, big difference. Like to assign that for the Public Safety and Services Center-
I didn't sign bill.
Construction fund, and then also to designate the interest that we earn from that five million dollars to stay with that, um, construction fund, yeah.
Need a motion to add it, so move.
Second, the motion is second on the table, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Okay.
What, what is the interest?
Um, it depends on where we put it, and so that is kind of where we're gonna start next. So, um-
You need a motion to allow you to find the, the most appropriate or best.
Is that what you want to do, or do you want to hear Toby's presentation, or do you want to just give me and Deb the discretion to handle it?
I, I think I would rather give staff the discretion to find, find the place, I'll make that motion. I'll second the discussion.
Go ahead.
They've, uh, done a great job in the past with all their other accounts, so why not put it in the hands of chief board?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Alka.
So I think there's gonna be three possibilities, there's gonna be, Deb, has you been using the sweep account, which is now at-
Well Fargo, when we moved out of Wells Fargo, I wasn't using the sweep account, but Victoria reached out to me, and it's gone up again way more than what I'm getting anywhere else. So last Thursday, I moved seven million dollars from, um, First National and Lee money markets and put it into Wells Fargo sweep account because I'm making way more money there. Um, and I can, it, I, all I have to do right is check and get the money back out, so, um, it's very-
It's always a bill.
Yeah.
It's always a bill.
One that, on-
No brainer.
Alternatively, you'll see a resolutions, I think we would like, like, uh, the chairman to be authorized.
I got rid of the pay every, since we're not using the checking account over there, Richard, and I got rid of a couple of fees that we were being charged because I don't have, we don't have payroll going anymore, and we don't have that direct deposit, that the A.C. agents, so I was able to get rid of a few of those costs and stuff, so, um, it, it's not gonna cost us as much as I used to.
All right, let me-
I'm making way more money.
Before we go any further?
First national is only at point three, and over there right now, I got ahold of Victoria, and last night, um, this week, was it one point four two. I mean, I know it's not a lot, but it's pretty good.
We have a motion is second on the table to allow staff to designate an area for these funds, let's take a vote, all those in-
Any question on the motion, was there something we needed to add to that?
I was just gonna, um, maybe clarify too, so there's the sweep account, but then there's also, um, you'll see, uh, hopefully your motion authorizes the chairman to sign the resolution that would allow, uh, Brenda and, and Deb the flexibility to use the, um, uh, the South Dakota FIT investment program, and then also Toby from Colliers offers an investment service as well. This is separate from, um, his arrangement and helping finding financing for the Public Safety and Services Center. It all comes down to, because these are governmental entities, there's only certain, I think, and Toby and Brenda, or Deb can correct me if I'm wrong, certain investments, um, that can be used for government investments, right, highest, the highest quality, uh, and, and so it comes down to how many points you're gonna basically pay, commission points, um, for someone to do this investing for you. And so that's the flexibility to allow us to find the, uh, the best rate. Is that fair, Toby? I think it's fair, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of-
It wasn't included in the second.
My statute, whether we go with FIT or whether we go with OB or whatever we do, when they buy these funds, we can, they talk about security and getting like three or four.
And they're, I think they're all treasuries, I think that's kind of what we're limited in, in getting is treasury, so-
Okay.
High, backed by the full faith and credit of the government, right, so, yeah.
Everyone under the full, understand the full aspects of that motion then?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
They made that significantly fast.
And we'll need Randall to sign that resolution then.
Yep. What else do you have for us then?
Um, that's the only resolution I have as far as, um, that's for the South Dakota FIT, um, I don't know if Toby will have a resolution for us to sign, but if he does, it'll have to come back over, back through the meeting 'cause it has to be, um, 'cause I don't have a copy of it, and I have to publish it in full, full context, and so if he does have a resolution for me to sign, I'll have to bring that back at the next meeting, so.
In August, okay.
So is that technically a, a motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yeah, that is correct.
To make sure that's what it's like.
And then, of course, there's a couple of applications that I have to sign, basically to open up the account, and then this authorizes Deb and I to be able to invest upon.
And the other motion took care of the unassigned fund.
Yep.
Yep.
That's fair, thank you.
Anything else?
No, but that makes your head hurt, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Not anymore. Makes your head hurt now.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much for your trust, and Deb and I will do the best we can with, uh-
I think, I don't think there's any need.
I was gonna say, we can take care of that, that's done.
Yep.
Okay.
Toby, I think there's no need for Toby.
Yep.
We like Toby, but thanks, Toby.
Thank you, Toby.
Hope your back goes better, wake up, Toby.
He's laying on the floor stretching, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
Hope you feel better, Sheriff.
I think Sheriff is planning on, uh, if he still feels well to attend this afternoon during your budget hearings, I think he'd probably be more in the role of answering questions rather than presenting information like he normally would.
Okay, I think that'll work.
That's accurate, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brenda.
Thanks, Brian.
We're a little ahead of schedule, but Brenda?
Um, okay, we could do the, um, yeah, none of these are public hearings, so we can go ahead. Um, we'll start with the, um, order declaring the Wasp Road District Incorporated and subject to vote. Um, this is a huge, um, undertaking out there on the, um-
Wasp Road, Yellow Creek area.
Yellow Creek area, um, I know Bruce and, um, Robin took a field trip out there, went out and checked it out, um, and, uh, don't see any issues with the, um, map as presented.
Big.
Very big.
Be looking for, uh, authorization to have the chairman sign the order.
Second, a motion is second, everyone understand the motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, okay?
Okay, and then, the next order is on Friday, um, Robin, uh, held an election with the Golden Mode Road District, um, gotta get it colder. Golden Hill Road, yeah. He'll vote, so we need to canvass the votes, the votes were, um, a total of six people voting, with six voting yes, and zero voting no, so we just need a motion to, um, authorize the signatures on the canvas, and then also, uh, the order declaring the Golden Hills Road District Incorporated.
I'll move.
Doctor.
Everybody get-
How many eligible voters were there?
Um, I'm sure it's in here somewhere.
There's like twenty some?
Was there twenty?
Uh, I'm guessing.
She has, she has a voter list, yeah, it looks like thirty, well, there was thirty-three, um, landowners, but not all of them are eligible to vote, so right around in-
Why aren't there, like, two or three?
Um, if they're, like, yeah, they like, like, for instance, if somebody owns, like you and I own the same property, we would only be able to vote once, or in LLC, so, yeah. Yeah, that is correct, yeah, so tw- it looks like twenty-seven.
So if you're, if you're on the state, you can mail in a, right, that is, and now they change it.
Yep, do the absentee process, yep, yep, just like, uh-
It's like a regular election.
Yep, and so there's three different copies, if you could all find the three of them, there should be the canvas, and then, uh, order declaring it incorporated.
Should we vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sorry, I was signing, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Oh, I know, I was gonna get to it.
Do we have two more to sign or not?
Yep, there should be three canvases. Oh, did you sign all three of them?
I didn't know there were three.
Oh, I did not.
I didn't know that, no.
You get to pass around the best of those, you get to drink them around, pass them around.
Take one down, pass the canvas around, three canvases.
I didn't know that there was three of those two.
Well, I thought that's what I heard you saying, should be such fun.
Trying to be the light in the darkness.
Yeah.
It's all right.
Well, I can't get a pen to work, man.
Need another one?
Here's one.
Yeah, those are junk.
Those are, those are voting pens, those are not junk.
There's a voting pen?
Rope through the paper.
Well-
That will be the copy that we keep here in the-
Trying to get it right, Brandon.
Get his pen to work. Anything else?
How you doing today, Bob?
Yes, I have one, I have one more.
Okay.
Um-
I don't wanna be here.
Oh.
Terry Valley?
Terry Valley, okay, it's like, what do I have? All right.
Order approving minor adjustments to the Terry Valley Road District.
Okay, so the Terry Valley Road District held a board meeting, and in order to do minor adjustments of a road district, it has to be, that can, uh, landowner and the board have to be in agree-
Agreement.
Agreement to do that, and so they have, um, signed, had a board meeting, and, uh, have letters from the landowners that they would like to be voluntarily added into, be annexed into, the Terry Valley Road District. And so this is just the order approving that to bring them into the road district.
So do we take any action on this?
Yeah, we have to, we actually have to do a resolution, or not, yeah, and a order approving it, kind of like you do when you originally do the order incorporating it, you are doing an order bringing these, these, uh-
Minor adjustments.
Minor adjustments, too, yeah.
So, that was, there was also a, what, two over, zero?
Yeah, from the board, yeah.
I'm sorry, Randy.
So on the map attached to this, the Lost Camp Valley, is that right? There's a, empty blanks on it.
I think they're, they're, I think, well, I was about to ask you to ask a different question, where are the blanks there? Do I have it, right here?
Yep, right there.
Oh.
'Cause it hasn't been filed yet.
It'll be filled in.
When it gets filed, because they, we have to approve it first before they can file this, yeah, 'cause the, the minor adjustments get, get filed, yeah.
So they're annexing these over here, and they'll fill that date in.
Yes, all of that will be done once they can file the plat, or the-
Thank you for-
Yeah, the exhibit.
Is there a motion from the board?
I have a-
I made a motion.
I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Minute break.
All righty, I think, I think that's all I have.
We'll take a four minute break.
We texted Alan that we were waiting on him.
Yeah, that's all right.
Then, then it's a little bit, are you asking what happens if it is?
Yes.
Then it's a little bit different because it's almost impossible to do it, because if it's involuntary, like you wanna annex, hey, I wanna annex you into my road district.
Well, we have two property owners that access our roads that are not part of the road district, so we put a fence along the roadway, and then they have to figure it out. And it's both, they're both looters. So who gets to vote on involuntary?
Vote.
Yeah, vote.
It's the-
You'd have to vote.
It's the existing and them, but you, they have to do a petition, and then you have to do a petition, so it's kind of almost, it's-
Well, like you said, there's two people that access, that have access, looters, Doug could, could go off the other way, but he's got a paved driveway off of ours, his kid has access to ours, it shouldn't address.
Yeah, profit, yeah, exactly. I better take a break, I'm working late.
Should be paying each way. Did you get my text? Nobody already? Early?
Just had some angry gentleman went office.
Was that you?
No. I was there for backup, so.
I just, I texted Rick Lord. Oh, you're here.
Well, I had to walk out on him.
You're shorter.
Yeah, I'm shrieking, January, right?
Short timer?
Short timer. Will be County apparently has dropped, taken care of the east mile and a half, two miles of glee in a road.
Is that in our county?
Huh?
Is that in our county?
Me too. Sheriff trading with the Forest Service, imagine that.
On the utility permit application here for, uh, the border, the, the Rochford Road. This is submitted by.
I took it.
Here in the sanitary district, well, it's more than anything would be. Inch pressurized water mains.
Go ahead, ready?
They wanna come up, uh, the road from their existing home. That's all I have is so far is this one. But this isn't, they're saying the start date on there is May eighth of twenty twenty-three.
What's your recommendation?
I recommend approval of that.
Post follow recommendation, second.
A motion is second on table, further questions for discussion. Any none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same side, motion carries.
And I have a driveway permit here that was submitted after the, uh, I don't, I looked at it after the, uh, last week's deadline. You will have it in your packet. It's submitted by Adam Masters. And this is for a new, new residence off of the Rochford Road. Just weeks west of the old Fish and Fry or Fish and the About, off of three, five, not three, four. When I looked at it, there's, there's not even gonna require a call or a site distance to access it from both directions.
Your recommendation?
I would recommend approval.
Will you could follow the recommendation?
I'd like to keep them wanting to get going on building their, they ain't waiting till all this, you know, this, this, this.
We have a motion and second on the table. Any further questions for discussion? Seen none, all those in favor say aye. Say aye, opposed, same side.
Uh, been working on the five year plan. It's my understanding that you wanna, we're gonna hold a public meeting. At our next commission meeting on the.
Yeah. Search team, that, Bruce. That's correct.
At eleven thirty, yes.
Eleven thirty.
Mm-hmm.
They have to do that by state law.
Yes.
And I'll get that notice advertisement into the newspaper.
Thank you.
And a letter sent out to the, uh, township, Saint Orange Township, all of their supervisors have to be notified as well. And you'll have to get that done. I have a preliminary, I'm calling it the preliminary draft of the five year plan.
Thank you.
Now, this is, as it says, it's preliminary.
Call this our draft.
Draft. First and first draft. Is that the same as we got in with our budget stuff? No, no, it has changed a little bit. There's, I had submitted the first two years of the five year plan with the budget stuff. So there's, there's some changes. So you might wanna take that, those two first pages that were with the budget.
Yep.
Cross them out.
Okay.
Focus on this instead.
Well, you come back in today.
And, and this is maybe more for later on this afternoon when we have our budget.
Or one, one to be on.
At least you have some numbers in front of you right now.
Yeah, this is what we talked about in last year, we sure was having this for budget.
Before budget.
Yeah.
I appreciate, I understand where you're. And, and just for your information, the, what's highlighted in blue are changes, are basically changes from what you approved last fall during the five year plan.
Good.
Okay, blue is changes, additions. The yellow, uh, on page two were two projects that moved from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And that's, you know, nutshell. Basically why it's highlighted in blue. I don't know if you want the, uh, I've got the preliminary for the graveling plan here.
I'm on the, on the Hannah Road one. Is that a grant, do we have a grant on that? One yellow board?
No, that, that bridge does not fall like.
Is that, is that that new type of bridge you can put there?
It's under fifteen foot in length, so it's not considered a bridge. We've got five bridges on the Hannah Road, all these new structures built by home states back in the day.
Yeah.
And this one, the, the, this is the one up by the, by, uh. No.
The big pond.
The big pond.
That's what I wondered, that one's always.
The, the back wall is tipping in. It's wooden, yeah, wooden, pretty, and it's just, back wall's tipping in, it's lotted, it's, it's. I was standing out there the other day, it's gotten really worse. And when the garbage truck drove over it, that whole, that whole one thing kind of goes down, humps us back up.
Cr- crum, they're not landing.
Yeah.
Uh, question, does that qualify under that new, the dollar set aside for small structures?
No.
Really?
Because it's on a primary road, if it was a secondary.
Oh, it has a secondary, yeah.
If it's on a secondary road, yep.
So, uh, so we're stuck.
So we're stuck with the, and this would be one of these modular ones, like they did on the Coyote Lane.
Yep, that worked quite well, didn't it?
That worked really well. This one is, it's skewed, it's gonna cost more money to have a skewed structure in there. But we've been, according to, uh, the gentleman that we had out here that built the other one on Coyote Lane, he thought he could easily rip out the old one and put the new one in in a matter of less than a week's time. So as far as disruption to the road, you know, there's, there's gonna be a closure. It has to be closed for a few days, but not likely to be closed for very long.
That's a tough one, I mean, you have to when you've got a long, there's a long detour to get out. You can't build a biopath cause the creek. But yeah, you did, yeah, there's a creek in the pond, but it is what it is, so. We're getting a new bridge.
How's, uh, Oliver's coming?
Well, uh, they started hauling the base course on it yesterday, the first bo- lift, bottom lift of the base course. I haven't been impressed with, they've worked them out there at all, uh, so far. But the good news is the compaction on it, there's no soft spots, um, showing up.
What aren't you happy with?
Well, it's just, it's all uneven and I don't, I just, I just, I don't know why the, the blade guy don't seem like he's a good blade man myself, in my opinion, but, but.
How thick a matter are they gonna put on that?
It's six inches.
Six inches gravel?
Round up the whole thing, full gap, so we got that material, the round up material underneath. And then we're adding six inches more of that, and then six inches of black. So we're gonna have for over fifteen inches of thickness for a base, except for we couldn't raise the elevation of the road.
Where it matches.
Right where it goes into the plant, they didn't want that load six inches higher.
Oh, so it dropped in.
So we have to match that in there, so they had to remove material, re-ground material, they had to pull some of that out of there in order to, when we get our base course in there and our asphalt, but it didn't raise it, we have to keep that at the same elevation.
Same at the other end too, where you matching it, right?
Yes.
Are you using the, uh, higher grade asphalt, uh, higher rated?
Yeah, we're using the, uh, the, uh, stone mix, the.
Yeah.
Material that we used on, on McQuiggin.
Probably wider?
It'll be wider, yes, it'll be twenty-eight foot wide.
The pullover area?
And there'll be a pullover area there like there was before.
Are you leaving the ruts yet?
And the.
It's like going to the car wash, here's your. And the turning lane, there's a turning lane.
And there's a turning lane.
Oh.
Um, yeah. Well, where are them, where are them ruts where that material there was, what did they say, it was over a foot thick?
Yeah, fourteen, they couldn't remember how deep they had.
Fourteen inches of, but that was the old class D mix, the stuff that doesn't hold weight very good. And this new material is.
Supposed to hold weight.
It's supposed to hold weight. You seen how it rudders?
Before.
Wait, yeah.
Yep.
Has its own intersection. When you have them, have that much heavy load sitting there on a hundred degree day.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna move.
When you have them breaking.
Breaking, just breaking, the starting and stop, yeah, we're charred on that. So, yeah, that. They were saying, you know, it was gonna be done by August fifteenth and I'm saying, yeah.
Good.
Saw one of those giant rock trucks come in empty off the exit eight.
They're the ones hauling the.
Yeah.
Scores.
Centipede.
It looked like, it looked like it might've been empty, but. Apparently there wasn't load enough, you couldn't see into it.
They're hauling what?
Sixty ton, some trucks.
Sixty tons of train.
Well, they got the axles for it, so.
And they got, yeah, and they got like twenty-six tires or something on it.
I'm glad that they're turning off the interstate, cause when they turn is when they do examine. The only thing was when, when they turn, when they turn on to Oliver, we might have to look at how. Well, they let, they can lift all those metal axles up for turning.
So how do you guys like the, uh, sidewalk project?
I think it's a.
I think it's an I ninety going through.
I was shocked that they're using asphalt.
They're not.
They are. Yeah, they are.
Oh, asphalt, white rock, yes.
Yeah. What'd they say?
You said asphalt, you said asphalt.
And they caught three at the intersection.
Yeah, it's interesting that it looks like a interstate going through there.
Sure, like your forgiveness to me.
Well, that was a discussion that years ago I had with, with, um, George Martin. He goes, we can just, basically we can put asphalt right down over grass and it's, it'll, with a bicycle, it'll last for years and years. And they got all the, the design of ADA for some of that.
Well, they got quite an intersection going there to head off the other way to the ballpark. I see they putting up that block wall and.
Yeah.
The, uh, the reason it's that way is because they got state money, so it has to be tied to the state.
It has to be according to the state's back.
When we first looked at that, Nyman talked about when their timber crew came in, we'll just take a blade, blade it, build it, and then they can pave it. When the grants got involved, it kinda got shut down. And they had to put a bridge in, you haven't seen the bridge in there yet.
That's why that wall is there, cause they think.
No, it's in the middle, behind, behind the hill on.
On the other side.
Yeah, that's where they started working. And, uh, it's, uh, just directly south of the transit.
The irrigation ditch.
They, they had to protect it, HIPPA, HIPPA found a historic irrigation ditch, so they had.
Well, that's the one where the walls is, there's a ditch there too, yeah, there's a ditch there.
But this one was historic, so they had to put a walking bridge over it, not disturb. Old wood, old wood thing or something there.
I thought they were going on the right way on the roadside.
They are once they, at the end where they're, where they ended.
Are they gonna be out on the flat up there on top?
Tumbleweed up there on the, right on the.
They are, yeah, they'll finish that, it's all.
Clear on up to.
It's about two.
It was moved about two hundred feet to the east, because Nyman didn't want to ask for the.
Four lane and then.
And then they cross.
Uh.
But they're having a hail with, uh, them getting underneath the interstate too, I guess.
Yep.
They're supposed to make it to the interstate bridge this year, aren't they?
No, no, they won't get there this year.
Are they getting all the way to fourteen A or?
Yes, they get all the way to fourteen A.
So there's kids to be dumped in right there.
I can't believe the state.
No, no, no. It's the same at Sandstone.
Sandstone, same way.
Yeah, the bike paths, those are, and it's not bad.
No.
I saw a little kid on their bike riding underneath there the other day, and I tried to clear the other land to get around them. It's like, yeah, there's, there's enough houses out there that need to do something, and that's better than being on the side of the road or the interstate, especially.
That's a busy area too.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, tomorrow, or tomorrow we have recon meeting on the Westview paving project. Apparently Sackerson wants to do that project during the rally.
Oh, really? Right there, they have the gravel in house.
They'll have to be, they'll have to be on their own.
I can't imagine there's that much traffic there. There is a rally. But who knows?
That'd be a great time for. Well, there's new, there's sixteen new lots in McQuiggin's that use it now too, so, yeah, but residential is not really, yeah. Shouldn't be much going.
Garbage truck, yeah.
Stuff like that.
Anything else for us, Alan?
Well, I'd like to, what is your, as you've read in the newspaper, the state DOT shop, the industry of which they're completely abandoning it.
Yep.
Okay. And has there been any more, is there discussion about, they obviously don't wanna sell it or to Lawrence County.
Doctor Alkin knows information for us.
I was looking for a venue to maybe store, uh, furniture for the jail building. If we get donated furniture, that that might be a great location to have it, and so I, I inquired. And no, it sounds like the plan is, is that if the, the state wildland fire transition goes through as anticipated, that that fire equipment that's in lead will then end up there at the DOT shop at exit ten.
This is all been, okay, understand now, go ahead, Mr. Driver.
Well, a couple things, I spoke to the young lady that's in charge of that decision. She gave me a little bit of background. Um, but I'm more concerned about wastewater treatment facility that's there. Are they gonna continue to maintain it, maintain it? Because what, we need the water and sewer that they're providing us. And if they leave completely and don't re, uh, reuse it for something, I think we have first option on that. But we, I don't think we wanna get in the wastewater business.
It's just a pond.
Holy God, it's a lagoon.
Yeah. And we own seven acres, the county owns seven acres to the, to the south of that, so.
I'm a little concerned about if we do something different with the pond, the reclamation is, uh, interesting.
They haven't notified Lawrence County that they need to vacate the property, have they?
No.
Cause at one time the developers really wanted that.
Yeah, they wanted the, they wanted the sign, they wanted to go bust a roof, build a job.
Yeah.
When the DOT gave us an update at Lachlan's Council, they're talking about a new, a new visitor's center and that's still on there. That location is still one of them being considered, but there's several.
That, that is going on as well, um, um, studying a, a visitor's center, yes. Um, I don't know any more details about that, other than that they are exploring that.
Yeah, the public.
Public kinda likes exit two, still?
It, it, I understand it's not definite that it's gonna move from exit two.
And then, and then they're talking about, there's a lot of public outcry to reestablish them by Tilford there, where now they have parking and porta potties and dumpsters.
Yeah, they should've never abandoned that.
And, uh, so that, there was a lot of support at the Rapid City Regional Office for doing something there. They had a discussion for them. Have you superintendent? I had one item. On the, did you wanna talk about your, um, description for the highway superintendent?
What?
On the qualifications, education, says a bachelor's degree in business administration, public administration, correct, right? Field is desirable. And then the experience is ten years. I think we should have a line in there some way, somewhere, or qualifications acceptable to the board. Just to have a little more leeway.
Yeah, so we got more discretion.
Because. They might have a bachelor's in music, right? Very good superintendent, we really don't care, right? So, or they might have a bachelor in something else, but I think we just need to have more discretion. Ward engineer, yeah.
So how did you wanna proceed with the advertisement on this?
Have you already started?
We were waiting for this.
I'm.
Qualification.
It is, I.
I have no problem with adding that to our discretion, no.
I did something to that effect.
A lot of times you might say it would commensurate, uh, experience or education also acceptable.
Doctor Alkin, I would leave it to you to put that sentence in.
But my comment about advertising is, why do we need to put this whole thing there? Why don't we just say, we're looking for a highway superintendent, go online and find.
Yeah, we wouldn't, you wouldn't put that in law.
Cause you read the Buick County one on their state's attorney, they got three columns.
And this would be just for, so they know what their job is.
We have asked them to do this, but yeah. So I think we just say we're looking for a highway superintendent, period. Take this much column inch rather than two pages.
Yep.
That's right.
Cause if they can't come and get the application, they can't go online and get the information.
Then we don't want.
Maybe their qualifications are not good.
I'm really disappointed that Alan doesn't have a music degree. All these years I thought he did.
I got a minor. Ken Anderson has one, he's the architectural one.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to change?
No, I mean, with that addition, I'm, I'm good.
Otherwise it sounds good.
I've basi- I left all the old, what was in there when I, man, it hasn't been revised since I've been here, so. That's, I got hired on the original black, the stuff in the black, not done with anything to do with the red stuff.
That's too bad.
Anything else for us, Alan?
Uh, what, what am I forgetting?
Mr. Alkin.
Alan, your time was originally set for this afternoon for the budget discussion to be about one o'clock. Sheriff i- is sort of under the weather, and so I don't think his, his presentation probably will go quite as long. So in other words, if you come a little bit earlier, maybe around, probably maybe around twelve thirty or so.
Thirty or what?
Yep, if that works.
What's for you?
Please.
This is my last budget to go around.
I didn't like that.
I don't have to.
How's your gravel? How's your, are you head on graveling and mugging?
Well, the mugging, we've, we've finished up the mugging. We finished, we've got one row left on this year's plan, graveling plan two bit road out here. We've got a bunch of culverts that we're changing out, ditching, we're doing. Um, plan on starting that after the rally. We can't be hauling during rally. But then we'll be going on to twenty twenty-three's gravel project.
So we're a little ahead of time.
So we're a little bit ahead of, of this time, but, but basically a lot of that, the reason is because we, last fall, we got half of this year's done last fall. The list, what was on the list, so.
And the other weather.
Nice, yeah, nice. So if you have a long fall, you can get a lot of roads graved.
And during the traffic count.
You don't have to worry about.
Like on that guard rail, you just have to, what, hire a hilt to come up and redo it?
Yeah. And hilt, well, did you see the damaged section there by the exit eight gas station?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What did he charge us, six thousand, six thousand dollars? I mean, on, on repair work for fifty feet, for fifty feet.
Well, this one up on the home stake's gonna be way more than that then.
He put in three hundred foot of guard rail for, I finally got guard rail in up on two bit, three hundred foot for eleven thousand.
Oh, my God.
But they caught this old kid, so hopefully his insurance will pay.
Well, I think that's why, and that's why his philosophy and his, but that guy at exit eight had no insurance.
Yeah.
So we were stuck with the whole bill. Six thousand dollars for forty feet or fifty foot.
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot.
And they did get turned into the state's attorney there.
They have to pay restitution, they'll pay eventually.
They, yeah, it's going through the court system on that one to, to reimburse us.
But you can get blood out of a turnip.
We do get some though, it does come through.
Okay, alright, I'll be back at twelve thirty.
Thanks.
We got ten minutes, so we could do eleven thirty-five.
That, this is Cir- Circle's property.
Yeah.
We could do this eleven fifty or two, two, two.
You got time, ten minutes enough?
Oh, yeah, it won't take long.
Okay, let's go on to our eleven fifty.
Um, so. All of the counties have basically the same.
All of the counties have basically the same opinion that the assessment process was terribly voided. So the two thousand twelve rule allows you to submit a second draft or produce a second draft. So this resolution basically says that it's a recommendation of the five South Dakota counties and the two Wyoming counties and actually some of the cities are looking at it to, to, to do a second draft.
True.
Pretty simple and I won't go into the gory details because there's so much involved. Um, so with Bruce's review of this, I, I would, I would like to see a motion that we pass this resolution based on Bruce's review.
And you, you think it's good?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, everyone understand the motion?
Yep.
Resolution twenty two zero three.
Any further questions or discussion in reference to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
And I'll add one bullet, I gave this to the chief's office and the regional forester on Thursday, so it's, makes sense. Thanks.
Go ahead.
All note, thanks all the hard work of Mitch and Bill.
Many people, yourself.
Scott, they, they really are holding a load here.
Randy, should this, um, resolution, should this be posted to the, to the website or should I send it to the chief's office or, or which is, or do you want a copy to disseminate?
I, what we should do is two things, we should put it on the website, we should put it in the portal, we should send it to, to Jeff Supervisor direct by mail. And we should send it to Jennifer Sitzma who is coaching our work.
She'll be here, we'll hand one to her.
Okay, right.
And, one more point?
Most certainly.
I think, um, the assessments are due, I believe by next Monday to September first?
Uh, August first.
August, yeah, August first, yes, Monday. And, and so, um, I think Mitch Iverson and Bill have been working on them, I, I sent out a, a, a draft, I think of the comments. Uh, they're probably still in a discussion, so, uh, without having another commission meeting obviously by the first, are they going to be authorized, um, to submit those on behalf of the county, um, by Monday, or have to do it on Friday probably?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's imperative that we authorize them to move forward with it. Do we need a motion to that?
We do, yep.
I would move to authorize the, um, Lawrence County Natural Resource Committee and Work Group to submit comments on behalf of Lawrence County on or before August first.
Okay. Second, the motion is second on the table, everyone understand the motion? Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion ter. Anything else, Randy?
No, that's, thank you folks.
Amber's going to have Jeff come down, so we'll look at the, uh, what the schedule says, our nine fifteen. Second reading of ordinance twenty two zero one on our industrial building code updates. Knock that out, and we'll remind you for our public hearing, nine and five.
Ordinance two twenty two dash oh one, the I D C.
Good. Everyone happy with that? All second.
A quick, quick question, are we now in line with the city?
Yeah, dead with answers, they just motion to approve it, but yeah, dead with a big request.
We're not, okay, we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeff, for coming down. Sorry to.
Now we're gonna ease again, fill line around.
Yes, we are, we'll take a break until nine when we have a public hearing. I did.
Um, yeah, planning a real one.
Back in the room at nine for our public hearing. Okay, we'll just move on to items from county commissioners until nine o'clock. Go ahead, Randy.
Just FYI, the fourth of August is the state organization of county commissioners executive board meeting.
Okay.
So if you have anything you want, I will be at that.
What is it, Randy?
It's the county commission organization executive board meeting.
Oh, in, in Pier.
Yeah, and then they have one resolution that was presented by, um, Pennington County and introduced by Lawrence County. Talking about license plate fees.
Yep.
And so that's the only resolution that's before then now. But, uh, that's kind of the final deadline to discuss resolutions, so.
We have to send out new plates next year?
Yep.
So.
Everybody will get a new one.
And there is some pushback already on that, uh, from people that don't want to pay those fees.
They're coming to them.
Yeah, that's kind of what it is. Anyway, I think that's the, other than that, there's not a lot on that agenda that I've seen so far, but.
Okay.
Um, once we get it, we can disperse, and I'm just saying this because we don't meet again.
Yep.
And so if something comes on that agenda, it's important, I'll share.
Thank you for doing that. Anyone else?
No, I was gone.
Yeah, I was down. I, I should have told them to see if they're going.
Um, do you ever sleep?
No.
Yeah, I did get a briefing on it, I talked to Don, uh, and, uh, Tom Proxwell, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Proxwell reported on forest plan revision assessments and, and his document is in here, Tom's is. And he talked about process. If I may, in my meeting with the forest chief's office and the regional forester, we talked about both the timber industry crisis and the, uh, forest plan revision. And as you recall, the supervisor challenged us to find timber. And I submitted at that meeting the preliminary numbers that the state is finding in their assessment using imagery. And which needs to be supported by LiDAR, but they've already found about a quarter million acres. The other thing is I brought up at the Camaro project, why they didn't take the roadless area, since nationally recognized as a critical area. We're finding the timber, but they're not putting it in their timber program, was my message. They listened very well, you know.
Good.
We're doing what we can from the top down.
I thought we ought to emphasize more on water too, on the timber management. Timber standing out there takes more, more water, it sure releases some too, but, uh, water should be, be concerned.
Yeah, if you read in some of the, if you read in some of the assessments, they talk about that, that the water sheds increase with proper timber harvest.
Okay, it is.
Significant, yeah.
We're gonna go on, it is nine o'clock, we need to recess as county commissioners, convene as board of adjust.
So moved.
Same.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, thank you, go ahead, Amber.
So this is for variance two oh one, um, the bowmen are requesting, and this is based off of a sale that's pending, I believe. Um, as part of that process, they found that one corner is not quite, um, meeting the requirements of the setback. It is into the road right of way, not a side setback, so it's a front setback, but it was very minimal. Um, as always, it's kind of hard, but I usually recommend denial and so does planning and zoning, but in this scenario, I think they understood. It was a very minimal, um, piece and it was found as part of the closing process. So that's it.
Questions from anyone? Go ahead, Brandon. I'm sorry.
At the end of it, it's, it's next to a culvert sack.
Yep.
It's, I struggled to approve it, but I mean, under the conditions, this one is one that if there should be any kind of gray area, it probably meets that.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public, any comments for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, come back to county commissioners, go ahead.
Well, you know, looking in at a variance, you like to see hardship. And if we were looking for hardship, it's corner lot. And a lot of jurisdictions have a formula for corner lots. So I have two frontages on it.
Two frontages.
Two frontages on it, and so I think since it's a small amount and it's a corner lot, we can have a little latitude.
And it's sure already built.
And it's already built.
And that's the, the tiny bit of encroachment that's on the culvert sack.
It's not on the main thoroughfare, so you have a bit of traffic coming in.
And I have photos too, you can kind of see, I mean, there's lots of.
Lots of.
Frontage.
I have no issue with that.
Lots can be approved.
Second.
Was it, was there some comment about the, uh, some neighbors and that about, uh, nobody used the, uh, turnoff there, something like that? Uh, I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Um.
I don't really know what you're talking about.
I.
Looks like there's two driveways going into that property, but that's not counting the whole.
I don't think that we have any.
I didn't have any thing, I guess, but I.
Can you just go back to the photo?
It looks like they have a, a drive-through deal, but again, it's not a county road, so.
You see, go up a little bit, if I can see the bottom, I'm sorry. Move the, move your.
Other, 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 other.
Your other up, there you go.
Your other up.
So if you see the corners of the building, they have that rock finish. So I, I don't know if the, the reporting was to the rock finish at the corners or the foundation. So it might not even be as much as we predict if we reuse the foundation.
Okay. We have a motion in the second on the table, any further questions, discussions in reference to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Hearing's carried, now we can move back to.
This would need a motion too.
Motion to come back as convene as county commissioners.
And then we get. Okay.
Well, the next one we have is at nine thirty and it is a public hearing, as are the next five.
If you guys wanted to, I could do eleven fifteen.
We can do eleven fifteen.
That just sounds great.
If you want to.
Yep, that's good.
Um, so Maitland Partners is a pretty easy one, it, this is one that it was continued from June fourteenth. Um, they, he called me yesterday and they are, they had to submit some stuff to the state for approval. Um, and they are probably going to end up doing a tank is, is what it's coming down to. So they were not able to have what you needed for today's meeting, they just didn't have enough time. So, um, Gene Pesca is who has kind of taken this on and he's been very good to work with, he knew kind of exactly what needed to be done once they got through that process. Um, but it sounds like they, they ended up having to do some stuff with the state because of the community water system and that whole. So they, they've submitted everything, I got the packet that showed that the DNR is in, you know, has the stuff. Um, but other than that, that's just where they're at. So he's asking to continue this discussion until September sixth. He's hoping by then they have a design build and the stuff back from the state, so if that's okay with you.
Second.
Everyone understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, okay?
Brandon, can we do the, um, eleven forty five?
We can keep doing eleven fifteen if you.
We got eleven fifteen.
I got a couple more.
Got more on there, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, then the next one is, let me go back here. The Rimrock Canyon one, so, um, at the last meeting, you guys had asked, some of you were going to go out and see it. And in the meantime, we did go out and take some photos of it. Um, we're finding that we can't put the images on the, online, it won't accept them. So these are some pictures, um, that we took while we were out there. This is the, I would say the downhill side where you guys were concerned about the grade. Um, it starts kind of right up in here and it comes down, this isn't finished, it, we could drive through it, but it's not finished by any means, so that just kind of gives you some context. Um.
Well, we've done this kind of exception in the past, my concern was guard rail or not, and when you look at the photo, is it.
I don't think you need it.
You're not going to slide into off the bank and go upside down, you're going to slide off into anything into the grass, you're not going to tip.
This is coming up this way. Yep, this is real good in here, um.
Do you have a where it matches into the existing road? Or it hits Forest Service Road, do you have any pictures?
I did not go out that far, um, I have, the video would not load. For some reason, the, I did take it, like, driving it, but it, I couldn't get it to load. Um, so when you come off the main part up here, when you come off the road right here, this is a nice even, I mean, it just comes right off the road, no problem. Coming down the backside, it was hard to tell because they don't have it built up, but that one was a pretty good dip back up onto the Forest Service Road. But it, it wasn't finished yet, so I couldn't tell, you know, what it's going to look like, because they stopped construction when this discussion came up. Um, I think overall, from what I could tell, it's going to be a nice even, they, they're going to put culverts in, you know, on both ends, but it.
Mr. Driver.
Well, they show a nine to ten percent match point on the grade coming negative. So you, all your debris's going to go out onto the Forest Service Road and all your traffic's going to slide out onto the Forest Service. So you- all your debris's gonna go out onto the Forest Service Road and all your traffic's gonna slide out onto the Forest Service Road. Our requirement is a two and a half percent negative slope for that shoulder out.
That's where that dip would be on the other side.
Yeah, where- the- it's pretty bad right now. I couldn't tell.
You know, I- I, uh, the solution is to raise the Forest Service Road. That's really the solution.
Okay.
But I have an issue of safety with that type of grade, but it's not our roads.
That's where I go to. If it was a county road, I'd have a lot more to say on it, but since it's going to a Forest Service Road, then how- how did it look? I mean, how did- when you looked at it, just as a...
Ju- it- coming in, it was smooth. Didn't see any issues. Coming out, it was hard to tell 'cause they had stopped construction. So there's, you know, there's that much.
And that's- that's not on this part. That's on the part on the other side.
The lower part.
That's on...
And so, 'cause this is the part...
That- this part's really good. This part here where you come right here, right up here is where they stopped. They haven't done anything else. So coming down this, it's really rocky and steep, and then when you come off right here, like, there's probably a foot drop right here that we drove off. Then there's still another hundred and fifty, two hundred feet before you hit the Forest Service Road. So I'm assuming that's gonna get finished and smoothed out.
Looks like they got a lot more to do.
I think they stayed away from it because- because it was not meeting the goal.
They didn't finish it, yeah. So honestly, the way the other side looks, if they can even remotely match that up, it's gonna be fine. And the other thing that was interesting with this that I noticed is it's full sun all year round. They're never gonna have an icy spot, 'cause it happens to be right in the full sun. So that makes it a little bit better because of when it's- if it does come off, it's gonna melt pretty quickly. That they're not gonna have that issue of having a fleet, you know, sliding down into it.
Well, I, you know, I- if we approve this, I think we need to note that that doesn't meet code. It's not our road.
Well, there's the next guy's exception.
They did exceptions.
They didn't mention that one. Oh, and there's a matchup to the- I think that things as matched to county road shall be that way. This is the county road.
Right.
But again, I...
And so I think we will, 'cause the next guy that comes in said, "Well, you did it here," so we need to have some documentation. 'Cause I know who that next guy will be.
Well, I would- I would make the motion that we approve.
Exception.
With the- with the exceptions that they list and noting that- that it doesn't meet the grade to come off a county road, but this is Forest Service. So we don't, I guess we- we can note the exception but not recognize the exception, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, Forest Service and private. Forest Service and private, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my biggest concern was guardrail. After we started talking, it was...
I'll set that. I'll set that.
It was just a little bit of a curve, but when you- when I saw those first pics, I was gonna go out there and I got those pictures last week. And I went, "Oh, yeah."
I- I- I can go back and you can too, yeah.
Any further questions, discussion? We have a motion on the table. Everyone understand it? Go ahead.
Just to be clear, this is to re- approve as submitted the plans with the exceptions and the note.
Yes.
We're not accepting the road as completed and built.
Correct in the design. We also note it will not- it is not currently and will not be a county road to be maintained or anything else.
Everyone understand? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same side?
Right, and then the only other thing, I think Bruce kinda just made it as a note on there that we are gonna automatically continue the, um, Colorado Boulevard comprehensive plan until the meeting takes place August fourth. I think he kinda put it on here already, but I didn't know if you wanted to recognize it.
The motion that was on record was to continue- to continue until after the...
I think he has to keep notes, so...
Exactly. So that's- that's just, he asked, you know, mention that, so in case anybody wants to know. And then I did get, um, an email this week from the new, um, planner, um, Nick, just questioning if we had commented on it or if there's anything going on. He was just trying to figure out where it was at, so I just let him know that until the meeting takes place, that you're not making a decision on it. And he said, "Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something," so he did ask me about it.
Can we get Deb Crowe in here?
Let's do the eleven forty-five.
Let's do eleven, if we can get Deb over here.
Doctor option for that too.
Where can Bruce go?
Oh, and Amber comes in and leaves. I don't know what happened.
Are you two quarreling again?
You know how much time I spend with that guy?
Well, let's take, uh, three minutes. I'll see if Deb can come over.
So we don't have anything come night?
As many we talk ordinance, 'cause we never completed sentences.
Oh, well, let me go grab her.
If we're both drinking coffee, it can't really...
You wanna go grab her? Okay. Just so you know, it hasn't changed. He's still doing and completing sentence and then he disappears for a Pepsi. And then I'm like, "What happened to Bruce?"
Part of one of the lots went through the middle of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And we needed that part of it to get the house all whole, so...
Same vicinity?
Same vicinity, yeah. The houses here, these lots are here, and then way down here, there's another house. This house that was at the very end, when we, when they got the house...
Joe DiSorcina.
When they got it, they found out that part of this lot went through the middle of the house, and I can't remember which attorney worked on it.
John Prendergast.
House right there.
So what do we need?
What do we need?
Yeah, right, way over here.
Yeah, I can't move it.
Need a motion to authorize a public sale of surplus property and set the bid.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do the public sale of this surplus property inside this in Deadwood.
August sixteenth.
My second, and I had a question.
Go ahead.
So the value is over five hundred dollars.
Five oh one, it was valued, yeah, yeah.
Five oh one.
That cluster is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? Any further questions, discussion in reference to the motion?
Access is also an issue.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carried, so that takes care of the Deadwood. Now the other properties.
Two lots adjacent to what, Highway thirty-four, almost to the Beaufort County line on either side. One is next to the dairy there, dead from my...
Possible.
Uh, right next to that, it's been mowed, um, and the other one is a little bit further up to the north again on the left-hand side. It, maybe it was a gravel quarry at some point as part of improvements to the highway. I think that's probably how we got both those lots.
In fact, lane two thirty-eight, they called it the gravel pit.
Um, the, the deed for the northern lot on the, on the, on the west side calls it out as six point four acres or something like that, but since then, some right-of-way has been taken out of it, so it comes out to about four point nine or thereabouts, something like that.
Correct, that's what Brett found, it's four point nine.
Uh, both, looks like they're nice lots. Uh, similar motion would be requested for, as to the other lots, that they be authorized, uh, to be, uh, to be sold at public auction.
Sell those two separate though, right?
Individually.
Individually, yes, 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 those are nice lots.
Okay.
And I really think, I found some stuff that Marie had sent some letters to Mr. Mo way back when, you know, thirty years ago, but I could never find any answers or anything, so I will send the letters to him, letting him know that these are going up, that...
Okay, Commissioner Diver.
So these are remnants in agricultural zoning, so they cannot get a building permit.
Existing lots of record.
I think they're existing lots of record. They probably, they predate, I think, our...
They do, because they were created by Highway thirty-four.
Yeah, yeah. So I think...
So they would allow building permit. I think it's important, but they still have to plat.
They have to plat, um, honestly, this one over here, the little one, I don't know if we would allow a building permit, because I don't think they can meet, it's so tiny.
Okay.
But I don't think they can, mm-mm.
But I think for the auction purpose, they need to know that, because it just...
Four point three, yeah. Um, I think it's this one right here, and I don't, it'd be really tough with the setbacks and stuff on that one. The bigger one, you could, you can get up on the top and have setbacks.
Are they being utilized by the neighbors now?
Yeah, I would say probably. Somebody's taking care of them for sure.
I'm just judging by the shape of the big barn on there, it looks like, and trying to superimpose that on the lot above, and, you know, if, if that big barn can fit on there, they'd probably get a house in there.
Oh, yeah, this one you could easily do, the bigger one, the six acres.
Yeah, we're to cross that bridge till the time comes.
But I will require plating on either one of them to get a building permit.
Yeah.
They will set...
Do we have the motion, the second?
Nope.
Then I'll do the motion.
Second.
For both or just...
Yes, and that they be...
Individually. Everyone understand that motion? Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Now we'll set the bid opening for August sixteenth at eleven a.m., okay? We need authorization to, uh, publish the notice of sale.
I'll, I'll publish the notice, yeah.
Okay, alright, go ahead, Diver.
We're cleaning these up, huh? You got any more in the city limits?
I got twelve inches over Spearfish. I, I don't know how we got it way back when, it literally, well, a lot line twelve inches. I, I gotta, I'm pretty much, I've got some stuff in Deadwood, but I honestly, I have no idea where it's at. I neither just read its old, um, probate lots that we got back in the fifties and sixties, all it says was probate lots. So we can't find them, and some of them I think are gone, because some of them went down, uh, where Cadillac Jacks and the highways have. And I, I don't think it exists.
Don't even...
We'll have to monitor until we're proven otherwise.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, not unless you guys have to...
Any further questions, discussion, yeah? Hearing none, we'll take a break until nine thirty.
Good job, Chairman.
We cleaned up a lot of stuff, but we're gonna have to hang out till...
I was gonna say we might...
Well, we got plenty of time, but... We did fast, just didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Trying to get ahold of Danny McKay, um, he doesn't need to come at eleven fifteen. Hey, we need the, um, sign copies for the ordinance, IDC code stuff, I need it so that he can sign it.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yeah, because I don't have the folder down here, so I think we need that, if he can find it, if you can bring it out. Alright, bye. Um, so that's kind of where it is, I guess. I don't know if you have anything else for me, Mr. Newbaum's here, if you have any questions for him, too.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public for your, some of the speak for or against the CUP. Anyone like to speak? Alright, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing portion, come back to commissioners.
Motion to approve, Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Flanagan, sorry?
Was this condition...
I can't.
Um, it's on commercial, they're operating this rental right now, but there's a special resort to be used in highway service.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why.
Yep, just because they're still operating both sides of it.
Sure.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve? And a second, Commissioner Diver.
Couple concerns, um, they're saying that the camper, camp rentals come with the home, is that in the condition?
No.
You're talking about separate homes?
Separately.
Okay, so, uh, septic...
It was already approved and done.
Did it include the seven campsite?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions in discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carried, okay? CUP four seventy-six.
So the conditional use permit did get approved, um, I will have a packet for you after we get the minutes and everything. That kind of shows everything, um, so there's nothing else that needs to be done there. Okay, yep, I need those, thank you. And then, um, the metal sign, if you can get that back to us as soon as possible. Yep, that'd be fine, thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Well...
For another nine minutes, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll be on hold until nine forty-five.
There's marked nearby.
Tell him he's got in five minutes, get his time.
He doesn't take that anymore.
Because this is a public hearing, we have to wait, so, uh, a lot of times, so I apologize.
Well, I really liked that guy, he did this water presentation.
Oh, that was amazing.
Commissioners, if you need to take a break, we have till nine.
Hydraulics, whatever it was.
I usually, I'd see him every year at the German tent.
Yeah, you got to hear it, yeah, you got to hear it then, too. Yep.
You choose, Casey Everon, so this is what was submitted to the state, and I don't have the digital copy, so if you want to look at it, they dropped those off, or the...
Oh, maintenance, maintenance.
Oh.
That's, but I just got those, I haven't any digital copies, though. I haven't even really, he just dropped them off yesterday, I haven't seen them back, really, that's what he gave me. Sure, yeah, I can just...
I didn't even want a drink for lunch.
Okay.
Root beer I had on there.
I don't need those.
No way.
No thing I need, or...
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Amber, any discussion, they talk about the size of the tank?
Say that again?
Any of the discussions, have they happened to mention you, the size of the tank?
No, not yet.
I don't see any shop runs on the tank in here. So what we might do is just, on the note, if you're using a tank, can you give us the design on the tank?
Yeah, they'll have to when they do it anyway. But that was just kind of their first...
The second ones were still...
Yeah.
Second ones were still open.
I love this message. Where is it? My mailbox is for it, so response is good.
You're worn, you're never worn.
I know I'm never worn, but I am right now.
You need to pay one?
I might, whoa. When it hits, when it hit, I know, when it hits, it hit hard, it's bad. I love being old. What's that Palmer Gosh thing at?
Um...
Right outside Hill City?
Hill City, yeah, I couldn't remember.
Misty, do you have your mailing?
Nine forty-five, we'll go on to our next public hearing for CUP four seventy-six.
Okay.
Ember?
This one is for Misty Anderson, um, we're gonna stay down on Boulder Canyon, that's kind of the flavor here the last couple of months. Um, so the property we just discussed was Newbaum's, which if you look at the map, it was this one here. This one here is the one that we just did, um, a rezone and change of lot lines. We tried to do a rezone, but the rezone got taken out, so this is the adjacent property to that one. So we have a swath of, um, highway service commercial property all the way along there, and then it touches Misty's, which is this one here, it's all zone Park Forest. She is also asking for a campground on three point six four zero acres, um, and this one, we're gonna go ahead and pull some of these photos up here. So this just kind of shows the overall property again, um, there you go. So this is the summary that Misty put together, and it was in your guys' packet, it's pretty lengthy, so we'll see how long it takes to load here. Um, she kind of talks about her background, which I'm not gonna go through that in detail, you guys can have that to review. There we go, trying to get to the map. This is just some of the maps that were provided by Misty, that kind of shows general location. Trailer sits up here. This is the property that you can see from the highway, so the campground area that she's looking to do in is right down in this frontage, right off of the highway. Um, you can kind of see here, again, where she's looking at putting it. These are some photos, looks like I can't turn them unless I download it, um...
I don't have a packet.
But you can see the photos kind of in your packet, general location of where she wants to put the six little sites. Um, same thing there, showing the site, um, looking at putting a seven-foot privacy fence between the highway and parking area. You can see the existing entrance. I'm not gonna go through all of those, um, that's, uh, water. Um, she'll put in portable toilets, electricity posts, um, no drain field is the plan. There will be a self-contained unit, and they'll have to go into town to dump, um, which is pretty uncommon. You can do that, but she will not be having that there. Um, I think overall with this, the, the biggest thing, and it got brought up, it will get brought up again today, too, is there is, the neighbor, um, and Misty have different opinions on what the access entails. The access is a shared access point, the DOT will not allow an additional access, what's there is all that will be allowed. Um, so that is kind of that issue, and I would say I'm not gonna give an opinion one way or another on that access concern. Um, but overall, I guess that's kind of what I have for you. Misty is here, if you have any questions. I do know there are people in the audience that will want to speak as well.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public, if you'd like to speak for or against the CUP. Please stand, tell us what you think, give us your name and address, so we can put it in the permanent record, go ahead.
I'm Dawn Quadron, I live at the one one seven seven highway. Um, honestly, our driveway is a non-ridicical placement. We still do not grant Misty Anderson to have a commercial or public use to our driveway. Lot three, which is hers, gives an increase and decrease to our driveway.
Um, I think overall with this, the biggest thing, and it got brought up, it will get brought up again today too, is there is, the neighbor, um, and Misty have different opinions on what the access entails. The access is a shared access point. The DOT will not allow an additional access. What's there is all that will be allowed. Um, so that is kind of that issue, and I would say I'm not gonna give an opinion one way or another on that access concern. Um, but overall, I guess that's kinda what I have for you. Misty is here if you have any questions. I do know there are people in the audience that will want to speak as well.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak for or against the CUP, please stand. Tell us what you think. Give us your name and address, so we can put it in the permanent record. Go ahead.
I'm Dawn Quadgus. I live at the one one seven seven highway. Um, honestly, our driveway is a non-ridicical easement. We still do not grant Misty Anderson to have a commercial or public use to our driveway. Lot three, which is hers, gives an increase and decrease to our driveway. Back in October two thousand twenty-one, Misty Anderson got a letter from my attorney, Tim Johns, about the easement, only because she informed us that when spring came, we no longer were able to get to our home or get our mail. That the county gave her permission to remove us from our driveway. We already have problems with the easement already. To, in December two thousand twenty-one, Lawrence did our survey for both of us. He said, "The opening is our property, and Misty has to go through our property to get to hers." Now, we have owned our property since our early twenties. We have worked very hard to keep our property. We were told our property could not be self-divided into different sections and do different things. It had to stay whole. We have to look at our future. There's a rush. There's no rush rescating up and moving. Um, I do not want our property values to go down having that campground. Um, right now, down below the campground, it is a mess, and is a major ice source from the highway. I already have people commenting how it looks very trashy already, and how it's just not gonna look very nice. So honestly, I really don't wanna come home daily looking at this. Um, right now, pictures are not even correct, how much hay is down there, how much trash is already down there. Yes, this is a big decision that's affecting our life. This idea is very disrespectful to us, who have been living there for twenty-five plus years. Now, looking at Misty's to-do list, the porta potties, I have contacted two people. They said they have to be a hundred and fifty feet away from water wells. The trash, I have contacted our garbage supply person, told them that for gar- the commercial garbage cans cannot be on our property by our mailbox. Um, we will not give permission to light on our property. Parking, I will have anybody towed that's on our property. Um, weed control, they all call the grasses right now. Um, pet control, um, I already have dog poop all over our property down below in this area, so those customers might pick up their dog poop. What about all the live chickens that run around, the roosters? Um, the next thing is our mailbox is getting hit. The cop knows that. The first time I should've called the cops. He didn't. Took a while for me to get money from the state for that mailbox. Um, so I told the post office, um, I have more damages on my mailbox from RVs pouring in and pouring out, 'cause it's a tight squeeze down there. So honestly, I just, this is gonna open up a big, huge can of rattlesnake worms, whatever you wanna call it. It's, cops are gonna be called. Guarantee that. We're gonna have problems. And it's just, we lived there for twenty-five years. We've worked hard. We make this place look pretty, and it's a disaster right now. And I get a lot of people that get comments, and I just, I don't think it's fair. So I know whatever decision is made today for her, my lawyer's waiting for my phone calls to make the next phone call to stop her. So I will be doing injunction, no matter what. We will be going to court. We have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Peterson. I live at one one seven seven seven, US Highway fourteen A. And I always thought that you can't start a business on someone else's property without their permission. You could come to an agreement, you could lease, you could buy it, and then it would be possible. But my property is the entrance and the exit of the proposed campground. All the customers have to cross a great deal of my property before they are on Misty's property. I will fight as hard as it takes, as long as it takes to defend my property and my, and my rights. I won't be fighting for a place of hate or anger. I have nothing against Misty. I have nothing against you guys in the zoning committee. I'm fighting for a place we love. I love my property. Every square inch, every blade of grass is worth fighting for. So I will spare no expense, no legal weapons off limits, no limit to the amount of injunctions, lawsuits, cease and desist orders I would file. I love my property, but I love my rights even more. They're even more important. So, I, you know, I'd be willing to, to ruin my own property, to destroy it, to ma- I, I shut it all down so that no one has the access. I don't care if I end up broken homeless because of this battle, as long as I win, because it's the right thing to do. You can't start a business on someone else's property, not in America, in property lines, property rights, zoning committees, et cetera.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Misty Anderson. I live at one one seven seven five, US Highway fourteen A. I have filed for a conditional use permit. This property has no zoning restrictions. When I purchased it, I verified that because I have horses and I raise chickens. My aides supply food for various elderly homes in Sturgis. They are free. I do not sell them. It is a hobby. It is something I enjoy doing, and I will continue to provide for people that need assistance. When I bought that property, Amber's absolutely correct, the DOT will not add or change to that entrance. Therefore, I accepted that entrance, and you cannot deny my friends and family access to my property. This is not zone commercial. It has nothing to do with commercial. It's a conditional use permit, and the only reason I filed this is due to my neighbors' insistence on controlling my property. Where are those trailers of my friends and family that will be parking on my property is exactly off their property line. The only thing they need is the entrance. Their friends and family have the propensity to use the same entrance as my friends and family do. I looked at M and M sanitation to do porta potties, simply because I have people that have asked, 'cause they don't have RVs to come and tent during the rally. I have a problem with that. This conditio- conditional use permit is simply for the county of Lawrence, so that if somebody pays for that M and M sanitation, if somebody pays for the electricity, I file and I pay sales tax on it. That is absolutely if. Otherwise, this is my property. There is no restrictions on the property. I can have my animals there. I am currently looking at forty acres, and I will be doing the same thing there that is in Lawrence County as well. I do not live or reside on property where I cannot have my animals. There are deer and turkey that run through each property, and there are migratory routes that have been documented. This is a shared easement. Each owner has access. If I get denied access, then it cuts their access to their house as well. It works both ways. This is nothing to deter from there. I have just been loading hay onto my property, because at the current time, I'm waiting till after rally, so I can have my contractor come up and fix a few things on that property that quite frankly are absolutely ugly to begin with. There are metal sheds that have been left on that property. This trailer is a nineteen eighty-six trailer. It is very suspect to even live in it. It eventually will get removed, and a house will get constructed. But in the meantime, I have had family and friends approach me, because they know I have this property outside of Deadwood. Rally's coming up, and we live in the Black Hills. They wanna be able to plug their RV in on my property. In order to do that and not create a fight, I filed for a conditional use permit. That's it. I still can have my friends and family come up and stay on that piece of land, because that piece of land is zone, my residential property. There's no restrictions on it. I'm not looking for a fight, but if my entrance gets denied, yes, there will be a battle, because the fact of the matter is, when I purchased this property, the DOT, the county of Lawrence, and anything else that goes entailed with that, I accepted that, as did they. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing the one, excuse me. I'll close the public hearing. Come before commissioners.
So, uh, on the, uh, conditions, item twenty-three, so we three RVs and three tents only, not six RVs or six tents.
Dog at large.
Dog at large. And then thirty-one, or I had thirty-two added, and it's kind of with Commissioner Flanagan. I had no portion, part of operation, activity, driving, parking would be allowed in the DOT right away without written permission from the DOT. And, and I, I tend to support Mr. Flanagan, is, uh, when that road was built, top of that berm, I know was in the permanent easement, but I don't know if there's an easement on that flat area. So I think a, a complete site plan, the map we have is of the neighbors in two thousand and five. So to me, we don't have a site plan. And we need to know where that DOT right away is on the site plan, and the traffic pattern, if they're utilizing the DOT right away. If they have permission from the DOT, I don't care, right?
Right.
But I, I'm not gonna approve this about a site plan, accurate site plan, and some indication of what, what's on the DOT or not.
Are you finished?
Yep, nice thing.
The other, just like it was, and I think on the, uh, change of zoning request, um, I couldn't, I couldn't even touch and talk for this until I saw and understanding that that could be used as commercial property that exits easement either.
I feel the same way.
The DOT would have one element. The agreement would be the other. It looks like, I mean, it could possibly be, but I'm not sure, so I'm not gonna give it to that too much.
I read, I read it. It's pretty ambiguous. Um, an opinion would be nice. You know, I, I, I don't, to me, we don't have enough information to make a decision, but I would turn, who was, who was on the plan and zoning? You ain't asleep that day?
Richard.
Richard, it was a four-three vote. Can you give us a synopsis of why that was? It appears there was a discussion about the approach.
Yeah, there was.
It looked like it was all over.
To me, we have two, two opportunities today. One is to continue, and the other would be to deny, due to a lack of information. So I'm open to either discussion.
Sure.
I just don't have enough to make a, uh, educated decision.
I agree with you.
I agree with you.
And I think items, the items I mentioned need to be maybe, uh, looked at a little more completely.
Questions, discussions, from anyone else?
I guess I need some clarification on what you want her to look at. So you mentioned number twenty-three, you just wanna know what that is?
Let me grab them.
'Cause it says three RV and three tent sites, and that came from the original thing.
Yeah.
So clarification on that one. And then, I guess, number twenty-four, you had asked me about that. That's not our, I mean, Black Hills Fire District regulations apply. We're not gonna...
We should just put that parenthetically.
It says it right there. Black Hills Fire District regulations, but any associated fire-related information.
Yeah, I missed it. Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Well, they, no, it says require posting. My point is, they need to follow them.
Well, they have to follow them anyways. We, so the first, if you al- this is, we always have this discussion. The very first of every single CUP says they have to apply with all county, state, and federal regulations, period.
And every time I bring this up, it, it should be in, in the document. They have to get their fire permits from the proper authority, period. If they don't have a permit, they can't have a fire. They still have to have a, they still have to have a permit, have it inspected by the statutory fire district. And I li- I'd like to have it reiterated there.
So how do you want it specifically worded?
Uh, after information, it says, "All fire, fire activity and pits shall be permitted by the proper authority."
They're permitted every three years. Then you can, yeah, then you can have the signage also on.
Then you have the signage posted in the regulations, too, but you have to have a permit.
I think there's bigger issues though. I really think the majority of that is DOT right away, and then the, and then the easement, if that's actually allowed for commercial.
A number one or twenty?
Again, that may be a litigated issue.
Twenty, twenty-seven, there, there's no site plan submitted, in my opinion. So I'd like to see a site plan.
So I think you need to specify that, because there is a site plan submitted. It's just not, so you want, so you want a surveyed site plan?
Scribbles on pictures is not a site plan.
You want a surveyed site plan?
Something with dimension and location. I want something with dimension and location.
Okay. I'm gonna specify. If you want it not on a drawing, do you want a surveyed site plan?
If they take a copy of their flat, and they can draw on there where the stuff's gonna go to scale with some measurements on it, that is a site plan. Scribbles on a photograph are not a site plan. That's some, some kinda weird exhibit.
You know, Amber, I would add that if they called the DOT, that they would mark that line.
They won't anymore. I've been notified of that, that they don't have time to go out and mark. If they want it surveyed, they need to have it surveyed to show where the markings are. So just, that's why I was...
Then they need to figure out where their property line is.
Yeah.
And I, I, to their own benefit, they should figure that out, 'cause they may not have the space that they think they have. I'm concerned about that. So, so I think to their benefit, they should know where that is. And, and they've just been on a new monument. Program, their monument, and all this. Yeah, I, I struggle with that.
Just looking at the overlay of this, you can see this line, and, and I'm just gonna, just to put this out there, we can kinda look on the, on the exhibit from, we have the, the GIS, the, the mapping from the county. It's just an overlay on the locks on a photograph. And when you look at it, you can see on the one side, it's back into the trees away, and on the other side, it's in front of the trees ways. And I suspect it's off a little bit, but it shifts right up the tree line. How about the, 'cause a lot of times when a state highway does that, they cut all the trees down, and that's pretty close to the edge of the right way. Not always, a lot of times. So that little open spot in front may not be, the DOT may own that.
And then you had also commented on having DOT approval. Is that what you, what you, just so I know...
What I had was, uh, uh, no part of operation, activity, driving, and parking will be allowed in the South Dakota Department of Transportation right away without written, uh, document, documentation of, of permission from the DOT.
Can you send us a copy of what you wrote? That would be good. Let me have that.
So, continue this to the next meeting? Would that be to give them, to address some issues?
Somebody needs to make that motion.
Mr. Alt, would that be the most appropriate? I would make the motion that we continue this to the next meeting to give the applicant a chance to address, uh, the issues that were presented today.
I would second that with, um, noting that the public hearing is closed, but if there's more documentation on the easement that could be presented by the neighbors, that would be important to us, too.
I read that letter, and, and it might be, I don't think that addresses the fundamental issue that, uh, uh, from here, so that may, may need to be expanded.
Not o- not only the information we need from, but either, but information from both parties.
Yeah, oh, yes. Is that in your motion?
Okay. Everyone understand?
And that was the August sixteenth, correct?
Yes. Everyone understand the motion? Questions, discussion in reference to the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed, same side.
And I'll work, I'll work with you on thirty-two.
Okay. And then I just wanna clarify, 'cause I know this is gonna come up as soon as the rally hits. If I receive a complaint that there's campers on that property, how are we dealing with it? 'Cause it will happen in their personal use. I just wanna clarify.
How do you normally?
I will tell somebody it's personal use, and I'm not gonna touch it. If they're there and there's no advertisement for it, I don't think there's anything I can do.
Um, my definition, my name is Chairman.
Oh, sure.
Definition of campground is a lot that is used or intended to be used for occupancy by tents, and all types of recreational vehicles, including tent trailers for sanding, with all the purposes. There's no language in there, but requiring that there be a fee or, or any kind of commercial... but requiring that there be a fee or, or e-commerce, or advertising, or anything of the sort, from what I'm reading here in the ordinance. So theoretically, that's all, okay, but it's, the rally, there's a lot that goes on.
And if, but the reason why I'm saying, this brings up a bigger discussion, cause I've had five just like this, that we are having this issue, and I will have more, that people are allowing people to stay on their property, multiple campers, by definition, they shouldn't be there, so we don't enforce it.
You know, it's, we have a couple events a year that promote that, and enforcement is difficult at best. But it's unfortunate today that we didn't have enough information to move forward with this, because that would've made one less discussion, right? But I think I agree with Commissioner Flanagan that we need to, we need to visit that and either talk to the rally specifically, or look at our definition, and that would come from Flanagan's own, cause we do see this every year, Amber.
Yeah.
Practical side is, when you have that and you visit it, it's very difficult for your office to enforce it alone, the sheriff, so, or the state's attorney. So, uh, it's, it's, it's where we live and what we do.
I think it's, uh, redress of the definition is definitely a different kind of, yeah, so it's very, it's very broad, it encompasses just not age.
And we know rally is just a weird thing. Just, just a question, if they came in with a, just a permit to have a few campers there, can they do that for one time, permit? What's that permit called, I'm sorry?
Special use permit?
Special use, yeah. I think the same issues arise, you got, you've got a shared easement that needs to be addressed, DOT right away, which needs to be addressed.
So you wouldn't allow that on this specific one?
We don't even touch campgrounds, I have multiple properties that have people staying there, that I, in the past, we have never touched them because it's never, you guys have always said, during the rally, it's okay. I mean, that's always kinda been the
Practical side.
Practical side.
To your point, yes.
Yeah.
But apart from that, is the issue of, of how expansive is that easement for each property? Uh, uh, Attorney Johns' letter suggests that it's shared, and it's probably intended perhaps for residential use for those owners. But the question then is, can one residential owner expand that use above and beyond, you know, sort of, I'll call normal residential use, to include, you know, uh, a commercial, more of a commercial type endeavor, right? Um, over a period of time, probably. So, I mean, you, and the county commission can't answer that question.
It's interesting because, uh, shared driveway goes across the other neighbor first, there goes down there, if that, if this is accurate. It would be interesting to see where the actual driveway lies seventeen years later. And if they're coming in on their own property, it's one discussion, if they're coming in on their neighbors, it's another, regardless of the, so I think just a clarification of the site plan will help.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the ten o'clock.
CUP four seven seven.
Thank you for everyone that came.
Next one is McKee. So Jody and Richard McKee, I believe, yep. You're not Jody, Jody called me and said she was coming.
She ain't called me.
Okay, um, so this one is the Benjamin Taylor load, um, so if you're going down Nemo Road, there's a white, um, house that's been there forever. And McKee has built a new house back behind it, kept the old house, and they would like to turn the old house into an actual bed and breakfast. So where you would go, and they own all the surrounding property there, um, it's ninety-eight acres. And they're using the, I mean, it's all existing infrastructure, the house is there, the well is there, sewer's there, everything's there, they just wanna use the old house, um, as a bed and breakfast. I guess that's, that's really all there is to it.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public, if you'd like to speak for or against the CUP, please stand, give your name and address. Anyone? Speak for or against? Seen no one, I'll close public hearing, come back before county commissioners. Questions?
Can you go back to the map? Quick question for the applicant, if I remember right, on this property, there's a permit to cross that piece of horse service, get into the property. You've been improving that, people that owned this before you improved that for quite some time, is that right? Um, it's right up north between you and the neighbor.
Here?
Right up here. Right up there, was across the horse service, and you've had that permit a long time.
That's, that's the Nemo Road.
This is like Nemo Road.
Well, that's the Nemo Road.
This is direct access off of.
Down, down, there's the one on the bottom side. I was a little confused too, yeah, Nemo property is down over here.
Cause it's turned, it's turned sideways, so I got it now.
Yeah, but no, the Nemo Road is the direct access.
It took me a second to break through.
We, we did, we broke, broke that lot out. Okay, that answers my question on that side, thank you.
Anyone else?
Now, now, let's see.
What's your discussion from Flanagan doing on this?
They didn't really have anything, cause it's existing house, there's no new infrastructure, um, they're continuing ownership, and the only thing that's a little different, um, they're not actually gonna be living in the residence per se, but they're right there. So they, they still have direct, you know, they can.
That may be ATS.
Yeah, they can, they're, they're right there, they'll be cleaning it, they'll be maintaining it, they'll be making sure people are checking in and checking out, and all of that is still close by.
Move to approve as, uh, following the plan and zoning recommendation.
Second, you have a motion and second on the table? Any questions, discussion in reference to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same side, motion carried. We'll move on to CUP four seventy-eight.
Thank you. Can I kill this computer yet?
Yeah.
We, we've offered to get in at a good time.
We have.
Just order it.
Why don't you just take it home tonight?
They did, they did beat it, they beat it up. They've done it, it's just old, it's just old.
It could be the, uh, wifi.
No, and it's horrible right now, yeah, yeah, that's most of it. All right, so this one is, um, Donna Mo, Donna and Stephen and Donna is, yep, they're both here, sir. And this one is Zone Suburban Residential, it's right along Hillsview Road, um, it is one point nine acres. And if you remember a while back when we redid the suburban residential, kinda the allowed and conditional uses in those, it was deemed that we needed to take, um, horses and chickens and stuff just shouldn't be allowed anywhere without some sort of conditional use permit as you get into those higher densities, which is mostly in that Spearfish area for suburban residential, some of those lots have gotten really small. But we have a few of these still larger lots that are down there. Um, and so she had to apply for a conditional use permit, she wants to be able to have her horse there, um, in the back, and this is one of those lots, you know, if you look at the comparison, you've got the smaller lots right next door, but you've got a little bit bigger lots right here. And, um, she would like to, this is photos of it, um, you can kinda see it's, you know, well maintained. Um, here's the front of the house, which you can see from the road, and then it's everything behind it. Um, this is the type of structure that she wants to be able to put up for the, the horse. Um, and then with that, it, this was a tough one because I recommended denial of it. Um, City of Spearfish, they could actually, they have a city ordinance that allows a hundred foot separation from residences unrelated to the keeping of livestock. So from the house next door, she would have to be a hundred feet away.
And the house is all alone.
You know, any, anywhere on any side of them. Um, so that was the only thing that the City of Spearfish had commented on. Um, it was one of those things that she has to apply for a CUP, but the intent of the SRD district is for residential and purposes. But Spearf, that Hillsview area and everything, Evans Lane, kinda falls in that agricultural kinda background area. Um, but I couldn't make it fall within like an ag permit that we have, like if she was selling some sort of product or something there that was a little bit different, but she's still using it for similar uses, so it was, it was a hard one for me to go either way, but staff determined that I, I had to deny it due to the size of the close proximity to the residential neighborhood. But there was also conditions put in place, and I tried to go off of what we had done with, the last one we had done this was, we had put some permits in of how far they had to be off the property line, so like they didn't put the manure piles right next to, you know, the neighbor's property, and we had fly control. Um, so we tried to base it off of some of those other ones, and that's what we put in there. So I think in the end, at planning and zoning, um, there, we had one neighbor call that was concerned, but it sounds like maybe after some discussions and stuff, they've kinda worked out, um, on what she was gonna do for, you know, fly control and dust control and, and all of that stuff. Um, at, uh, Amy had said no more than two horses, they added that condition. Um, and then they did end up motioning to approve the conditional use permit as it was submitted. And you can see in there, um, in your packet, there was quite a bit of information that they submitted in part of that. And then I know right at the planning and zoning meeting, it's the very back, I believe, this letter from Golden Rose Stables, was a previous, um, person that Donna had been a part of, and she did write a letter kind of explaining what Donna has always done with her horses and whatnot. Um, and then Donna has also provided a number of different things in her packet that just explained on what her plan was. Um, that's kinda where it's at, this was a hard one for us. So it's now it's your guys' call, what you wanna do with it. She did have to notify a lot of landowners.
Yeah.
Um, and had to do it twice, so she has had, I mean, there's been a lot of effort put into making sure, and I only received one phone call out of all of the landowners that had to be notified.
Good.
And it was the direct, it was actually a brand new landowner, they had just purchased a neighboring lot.
This is a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public, if anyone'd like to speak for or against the CUP, please stand, give your name and address. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I did have a new neighbor, and she had just moved here, um, a year and a half ago to buy a property from Iowa, fifth generational farm, who, uh, had her parents estate sold, and the estate was in a country setting, and it had a confinement building next to them, and it ruined their lives pretty much. So as soon as she heard the word, she was panicking, but she said she didn't understand one horse or so. And, um, initially, when I, when I requested this, I did pay up to three horses, because right now, I, I have a horse in Minnesota, it's one of three in a paddock that's way less than a quarter of the size he'll be in, and I pay three hundred fifty dollars a month. And horses don't do well as solitary animals, so I thought if, I'm gonna do a time share with my friend who has a mare, and they'll go back and forth, maybe, um, like I said, Pedro needs special care because he's had cancer, and I have to give him free skin treatments every day, whether I have to travel or if he's in my backyard, and I do that. And, um, she said she'd time share, and I could keep the mare and him at my house, and then if I was gone, I could keep them at her house, and we'd have them back and forth. But if I do have her horse, and it's a riding horse at my house, and she takes it, um, a horse can hurt himself if one leaves and they wanna leave. And, uh, they're left alone in a paddock or prout, so I thought if I had a little pony or something as company, um, and I don't know that I would even need that, but I would. In my request, I did request up to three horses, which is probably unlikely, but I did request up to three. And then I thought I'd add on today that maybe I could put a campsite on that.
That's a good humor.
Cause it is a rally coming up, and we have friends too.
See lots of horses that wanna camp.
Anyway, I'm just kidding, if you have any questions, I'd sure like to respond to questions, I think I've answered them. Most of my neighbors, and I did get, you know, I had my email, I mean, I had my phone number and my correspondence with my neighbors, and all I got was positive, I hope you get your horse here. And, uh, some of the neighbor kids just pretty excited about treating carrots to the horses, so. That's really all, yeah.
Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Oh, I would like to add one other thing, I did, I was surprised when I had to apply for this in a thousand feet, not even a thousand feet west of us. Um, folks have that, you know, that Hillsview farm, and, and in May, there was a full paddock of fat pigs ready to go to market. Plus they have horses and cattle, and geese and ducks, and, so I did think that was in the Mary Court was the, an issue. I know it was in the three miles zone, but I knew they were too. I, I rest my case, thanks for the consideration.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Seen anyone else, we'll close the public, come back to commissioners, questions?
I might say the only concern was that they did back down on us, two horses instead of three. And the horse that she has is, uh, I think he's twenty something.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years old, too, so it, uh, it's gonna be around bucks or something around there.
Okay, Commissioner Driver?
No, we use goats, they work pretty good.
I don't have a conditional use permit for a goat though.
To keep our horses company, and they wouldn't leave without the goat. But, uh, um, question for Amber, these adjacent lots could get a building permit. And since the lot is only a hundred and seventy-five feet wide, that new home would be closer than a hundred foot to the facility.
Feeling of inconsistency, right?
Yeah, I know, I just, what happens then is what question?
Pre-existing. That's, yeah.
And, and the second thing is, anytime you have a small parcel of horses, if you manage your pride, they're, they're fine. It's when you don't. And so I don't see a condition in here, although if you re, we reviewed every year, right? It talks about that. Cause I would suggest that if the neighbors come in and complain because there's too much manure, flies, or over threes, that this board would act.
It's a point of review. I don't know enough about maintaining horses to ever, you know, whatever, like you guys decide, the ones that actually spend time on horses. That's about motorcycles, like, you know.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, everyone understand that motion? Further questions or discussion in reference to that? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, motion carried.
So Donna, it was approved?
For three?
Two, two horses, yep. So what, um, we'll do is, again, we'll put this together once we have the minutes from today's meeting, and I will mail you a packet with all your approvals on it, and then you just have to make sure you meet the conditions. Now, the interesting thing with this one is, I was assuming you're gonna need a building permit from Spearfish for the new barn-like building.
It's a portable.
But I think you're still gonna need a permit, and so I will send them a copy of the conditions. And a lot of times, um, Tom Paisley with Spearfish will review the conditions based off of the site plan that you provide for that structure. So you're gonna wanna go there.
I was just commenting, it's the width that's bad, not the length, and so the people in the back for the new house would go, would be no issue. And it would only be twelve feet that I do last here on each side.
Yep, it's just, it's just a building permit discussion, so, okay?
Yeah, I don't, but I don't know that she will be, and it's just not permanent, it's.
Yeah, I don't know for sure, but we'll have to make sure the site plan meets us if you put that back.
It is ten thirty, now someone needs a break, we'll move on to Mark. Good.
Mark's gonna be so quick, we'll be on the grid right now.
Yes.
Everything's the same, have a good day. Any questions? Sorry, I didn't mean to take, I didn't, to give your report for you.
Yeah, he gave his own report. How are things going, Mark?
Good, good, thanks.
Any major changes or differences?
No, no, a lot of, a lot of stuff is still, they're just status quo, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll start with the, uh, home state report. Our, uh, twenty twenty-one employment and contributions for both home states, the rich and the ill combined, uh, were ten FDEs, uh, plus two full-time contract employees and part-time contract employee. Our contributions for twenty twenty-one, uh, were ten thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, which includes a three thousand dollar home state scholarship that we give out. Um, actually, two fifteen hundred dollars scholarships that we give out. Uh, our open cat reclamation review, uh, reclamation, as you know, has been completed at the Wastrock facilities, uh, at the end of. Uh, at the end of twenty twenty-one, we've had five hundred and fifty-five total acres released, with approximately eighty-seven remaining affected acres, um, about eighty-five of those acres at the east waste rock facility and one point two seven at the south end waste rock facility. Um, the reclamation has been completed on all of those affected acres. We had no complaints associated with the home stake activities in the open cut mine area during twenty twenty-one, and no technical revisions were submitted or approved. Our twenty twenty-one activities, uh, included, um, that Barrick entered into the option agreement with Dakota Goldcorp in twenty twenty-one to acquire both the home stake Richmond Hill properties. And, um, that, uh, um, option, uh, can be exercised anytime on or before September seventh, twenty twenty-four, as is the option. We did some, uh, improvements, uh, at our tailing storage facility pump barge landing. Uh, the, uh, the grizzly goch, uh, tailing storage facility barge access road and landing were extended, uh, and that allows us to be able to, um, get the barge out into colder, deeper water, uh, that helps the Southfoot Science and Technology Authority with their water treatment. Uh, the extension also provides improved access to, to the pumps so that we can pull those easily with the crane and, uh, for maintenance purposes. Uh, our monitoring, uh, geotechnical monitoring, uh, home stake employees, multiple displacement monitoring techniques, including prisons and survey monuments, visometers, inclinometers, visual inspections, and INSAR or satellite monitoring as well. Uh, for the open cut east block, um, that area built in twenty nineteen, um, about three thousand cubic yards failed, and, um, it was contained within the pit boundary on home stake controlled property. There's another three to five thousand yards there that have potential for failure, uh, kind of fluff of rock, uh, but there's no indication any areas of instability or significant up slope enlargement of, of existing instability. The remaining rest of the open cut, um, looks good, no indications of, uh, other reasons that could represent a potential for substantial slope failures. And the east waste rock facility, uh, data indicates no significant movement from prior monitoring. The Blacktail Gulch area of the east waste rock facility, nineteen ninety-four to two thousand eight, there's movement in inclinometers. Uh, we've, uh, distracted a butt pressure since two thousand nine and two thousand ten, and, uh, since then, the movement has slowed and, um, is expected to continue to slow. It's primarily a, um, the movement is primarily settlement and relaxation of the pressure spill. Our Deadwood Creek monitoring results, uh, Blacktail Water Treatment Plant treats the water emanating from the toes of the sopet in east waste rock facilities. The water treatment plant moves selenium and TDS from the water quality discharging at the Deadwood Creek. Um, the Blacktail Water Treatment Plant discharge consistently meets permitted effluent limits, and our in-scream selenium and TDS levels in Deadwood Creek just means they're water quality standards. The Deadwood Creek monitoring confirms there are no impacts. Our twenty twenty-two projects for home stake are pretty, pretty simple. We're gonna continue our water treatment agreement with Southfoot Science and Technology Authority and, uh, continue, continue our other water treatment. Any questions on home stake?
Maybe.
Uh, the released acres, is that public or private land?
That is released. That is private land.
Okay.
Thank you. All of the home stake land is private land.
Anyone else? Okay.
Uh, for the Richmond Hill Mine, um, reclamation acreage overview, we have two hundred and sixty-six total released acres, um, with seventy-six remaining affected acres, uh, of which seventy-three are used for water treatment, uh, facilities. Uh, reclaimed affected acres of about a third of an acre, and, uh, reclamation to be completed in the short term, which includes our, our original sledge bases and discharge ponds is about two point six six acres. We had no complaints, uh, in twenty twenty-one and no technical revisions to our mining permit. Twenty twenty-one activities included the, uh, sledge removal from the storage pond. Uh, this sledge is being removed in preparation for pond relining this year. We started that process last year. We removed about three thousand cubic yards. Uh, we have about five thousand left for this year, and we're probably a little over halfway through. So, uh, once we get that out, then we will, um, actually put in a deal again, um, and then another liner on top of the construction. So, be, uh, essentially a double lined pond at that point. Um, water management and treatment, the leach pads and ponds, um, biological water treatment, um, varies for selenium treatment. We operated the water treatment plant in the reverse osmosis unit, uh, discharging about fourteen point five five million gallons. Uh, the water treatment plant was also, the biological water treatment plant was also independently operated over the winter months, uh, discharging five point eight five million gallons. Uh, as of June first, we had approximately fourteen point nine six million gallons of water in storage. Um, we're down to about ten point one two million gallons now. Um, we've pretty much dried up the storage pond lower, uh, bringing that sledge. The leach pad effluent, uh, flows averaged seventeen point six gallons per minute in twenty twenty-one. These are lower than the, um, flows during twenty twenty, um, as we had very low precipitation in both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Spruce Gulch, uh, our reclaimed site of, of the waste rock disposal facility, um, water treatment there is for pH adjustment, the sodium hydroxide is needed. The nearby South Gulch waters pump two spruce gulch for treatment, and that, that, uh, treated water volume has also decreased, uh, significantly over the last couple of years. Pit impoundment and leach pad monitoring, the twenty twenty-one pit backfill monitoring, capping system monitoring continues to indicate that the cap is functioning to and better than I had expectations. Uh, and the leach pad capping system continues to perform well, limiting infiltration. Site-wide monitoring, uh, water quality monitoring, um, is, the water quality of the site is generally stable or improving. We have factor creek water quality monitoring confirms there are no impacts, uh, from the Richmond Hill Mine, and monitoring is continued, continuing with site-specific performance criteria that were developed with DEA and R approved by the Board of Ministers Department. Our twenty twenty-two plans, um, I mentioned replacing the storage pond liner. Um, we're also planning to re, uh, replace our reverse osmosis unit. Uh, we're getting a smaller, newer pit for purpose, uh, reverse osmosis. It's gonna be more efficient and allow us, allow us more operations. Uh, we're gonna continue our RO and biological water treatment and continue our monitoring.
Go ahead, Mr. David.
So on the backfill cap system, you're released from that monitoring. You were doing it every ten year, five year, ten year, now you're completely released from that monitoring, aren't you?
Uh, partially released.
Okay.
There are certain elements of that that we no longer have to do, but we do, um, still do quite a bit of monitoring.
And then, um, the wastewater treatment will run perpetually?
Um, I don't think that we have a model that shows that the, uh, selenium is going to decrease in the world's standards anytime soon, um, so we will be there for a long period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen. So, ten forty-five, we have a break.
Do you have a copy of the easement that they have, if you're interested in that?
That's from that first. Okay.
Yeah, there was a kerfluffle out in the hallway, like, sort of broke up.
Really?
From, yeah. There were kerfluffle in out in the hallway over something specific.
Well, the access, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
That was the problem before, that I don't think their easements were properly established for each other, and so they get mixed up.
Well, see, the easement there, it looks like it's family, all family, isn't it? That original one?
Well, you, you know, but it, it talks about heirs and assigns, and it's.
It says licensees.
Visitors, yeah, you know, and, and so it's like, well, I kind of get the argument, um, you know.
Yeah.
There's, the scope of that probably didn't have to be determined by someone in the black rope. Yeah. And that was, it's like, you're stuck. Well, then, if I'm, you're very good. It's, 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 uh.
So CUP after this break was four seventy-four. If you'll start us off, please, Amber.
Okay, this is, we've seen this one a couple of times. Dean had to kind of go through the process again because the first round didn't get sent out by certified, so we're here again.
Just chairman, I.
Oh, certainly.
I just wanted to state that I did the original survey when this is plotted, but I haven't done any work for more than a decade.
Okay.
But then I'll add, I did the original consultation on the subdivision when it was originally done, but I haven't done it for, hour on, and I'm probably on the far, farthest north end.
So when you were planning and zoning administering?
No, no, when I was done with that.
Okay.
Before it was on.
So, no, thank you.
So, this one is, um, a lot, it's lot C one at Gilded Mountain, so it's right at the base of going up the hill to Gilded Mountain subdivision and zoned highway service commercial. Um, and this whole thing started because in the highway service commercial zoning, we couldn't have a specialty resort or cabins or campgrounds or anything, so we had to go through the process to add that in, and then he turned around and applied for the conditional use permit to have the specialty resort there. Um, and the overall plan is to make three smaller cabins that he rents out, and then over time, um, probably a little covered picnic area and maybe a small little check-in office area over time. Um, the DOT would not allow an additional access, and so they actually had to work with Gilded Mountain to get access off of the Gilded Mountain Road. Um, that's actually been, it's, it's already cut in, I, I was out there and looked at it. Um, so this is the overall site plan, and then obviously when the structures are built, we'll get a more detailed, because each one will have to have a building permit from the county. Um, but this is general location of where the leach fields are gonna go. Again, they have to do a full septic as part of the, the building permit. So, this is kind of general location. Um, summary is basically what I just talked about, small cabins with a loft, um, A-frame type structures by the time they're done with it, and I think the covered picnic area over time, and then maybe one of them will turn into a little office, storage area for cleaning supplies and whatnot.
This is a public hearing? Are you done?
I am.
I'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to speak for or against the CUP, please stand, give your name and address. Anyone like to speak for or against? Go ahead.
Amber, the only comment I, I'm Dean Meyer, I'm, I'm the owner, let's talk from here. And, uh, the only, you men, I mentioned A-frame on here, that might change a little bit when you get the building. Right now, we're looking at a twenty-four by thirty-two square building, you know.
Okay.
So, they won't necessarily just specify there.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's cheap spot on it. The office is not in the plans right now, but we want to have the contingency plan.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak for or against the CUP? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing portion and move back to county commissioners. Any questions from county commissioners? Randy?
Under item twenty-four, we don't define cabins. Do we need to have a square footage limitation or guideline?
I don't think we do. No more than three is, you can't have more than three cabins on that property.
Because in his letter, he talks about sizes, and he just made a comment, I just, uh, or if they're thirty by sixty, all three of them.
I guess I don't, we don't have size restrictions, so that's up to you guys if you want to have a size restriction. I guess I don't, we don't have size restrictions, so that's up to you guys if you want to have a size restriction.
Condition, if you want to do it, I would, if you want to make the difference, we put it double sizes, that's why I would.
Yep. I think, I think that, uh, we should just say that, that, uh, in twenty-four, that this medal includes these sized cabins. And deviation would take a addendum by a county commission.
Okay.
Condition twenty-five, if you're gonna put it out.
I would just put it in twenty-four.
Okay.
What are you proposing?
I would just say that, uh, I'm receiving this letter, this proposal is incorporated. Polls are in, is incorporated, and if the buildings deviate from those sizes, he'd have to get approval by the county commission.
Okay.
Not saying he can't.
And then ask him to amend it. Yeah, amend, amend, okay.
I would move to approve with that condition of condition.
Second.
Right, we have a motion second. Further questions from anyone?
I would do it.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this to get it going, but I don't think we really have the right to specify the size. I think that's wrong.
Okay.
I just wanna make that note.
Any further rebuttal?
I just had a question for the applicant. Do you have a problem with those sizes?
So you're talking what I have, this could, pretty much.
Thirty-two by forty.
Pretty forty. I guess not at this time. We, uh, we, we are, we are planning three, we're only planning putting one on the end of this year, the other ones are a year or two down the road, so.
So if you do change it, it's approved for all of them.
So I, and I, it's fine. I just want to clarify, that means when he comes in to get a building permit, and let's say it needs to be thirty-two by forty-two, you're gonna make him go through?
No, just come to us.
That's not how it works. If you amend a CUP, I have to do a full, they have to send notices out and everything else.
Consider it a minor adjustment, and it, you know, just come directly to county commission.
Yep.
There.
Note of that, note of that in the minutes, and then we are, we're allowed to do that.
Mr. Ewing.
But if he, if he meets all the setbacks and everything, uh, if, if he comes up with the size he wants, and he meets the setbacks and all that stuff, why are we dictating that he can only be so big? I don't, I just think that's wrong. I really have hard time with that.
On the con, on the contrary, it's a conditional use permit, so we can put what restrictions we want on it.
It's, it's kind of tough because it's commercial zoning, but I can see building three full-size houses on there. Which actually, these are, these are bigger than my house, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't know. It gets kind of weird. With this kind of setup, you're almost, with, with three full-size houses on there, you're almost getting into a condominium concept or something, and you're talking about a hotel, and you're talking about heavy, heavy, uh, use and everything else.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm.
And, and Mr. Ewing, we're just trying to get him to follow the site plan.
I know, I just, uh, I, I'm not gonna oppose it. I want, I want the gentleman to be able to carry on with his project, but, uh, I don't know, I just have.
There's a minor amendment to size, they can just, minor amendment, if it requires a size, they can just bring to us, so yeah.
Any further questions, discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, within the minutes will note that it's.
Thank you. In the minutes, it's noted.
Any adjustment to that size would be considered a minor one.
Come, come, you just.
We got in the minutes, we had.
Yeah, because it would have to be, because it wouldn't meet the minor amendment requirements.
It's just, it's just adjustment to one condition.
Good, we, uh, we have some time? We have seven minutes.
I would, I would like to, since we're having discussion on this, the site plans we had come into the eye found wholly inaccessible, and I would make a motion right now to require the financing director and office to immediately start enforcing the site plan requirements as described in the ordinance. To include, and I can read it right out of the ordinance, to include all existing stru, and proposed structures, dimensions, design specs, location of facilities, uh, specifically setbacks, all setbacks, distance and feet from furthest and most projection of structural lot lines and road rightaways and setbacks. So, a, a site drawing to scale with setbacks, hand drawn, surveyed, I don't care, put a scribble on a piece of paper or on a picture, it's not a site.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Can you say it again, Brandon? Have planning and zoning immediately have?
Immediately enforce the site plan regulations as shown in ordinance. And I would say specifically dealing with conditional use, changes zoning, building, building and building permits, and any other, uh, sections as required in, or ordinance.
As per our ordinance.
I second to include all that language.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I counted as three ayes and two presents. Okay. That is the ordinance. Well, now we'll take a break till eleven o'clock, when we'll kick up our public hearing, the first reading.
Yeah, we had, we had a discussion about you.
Actually, that's a.
I think Lori called enough time.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm. I mean, exactly, listen. I would have.
Yeah, take care of it.
And, yeah. Yeah. And I was, uh, but it's, uh, it's, 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 it's. Certainly. Well, if you read it, that's why I'm, I'm.
So, yeah. It's a lot of work when we're housing, we had a family, you know, sixty-four at a.
I just don't.
And, uh, it was our.
I don't think that's what ordinance does.
And our family, so it's a lot of work.
You can read it, I'll pull it up for you. It's online.
Did you guys stay in with the cabins out there?
Yes.
You did, okay.
Excuse me.
No, you don't.
I will propose that ordinance would change to be a site plan survey, because people don't know how to do a light plan, it's a high system or.
No, I, I mean, no, no. Give me that. I can change.
I do, Brandon, it's, it's an ongoing argument, so it's fine.
If they did, they did, you'd have to pay somebody to create something.
The maximum.
Right, there was a two billion, that guy got one in the upper lot, look, and that's when we go. The other one, scribble, on a, on a.
Make sure everybody knew that the front of this is where the proposed trail is gonna go in there.
I was wondering about that and I did reach out.
Yep, and Tina does, is aware of that, so they just wanna take that into account as they're making the improvements and changes that that will be occurring there. Um, so that I think was the only kind of additional comment in here. Um, this is one of those, they wanna go from suburban residential to commercial light industrial. And the reason for the commercial light industrial is it was the one zoning district that we could find all the uses that they wanted to do were allowed uses within that zoning district.
Well, it fits in the area.
It, it kinda fit in that area, so that was how this all came about, but they wanted you to be prepared since it is a change of zoning request so that you understood what their end goal was, that's why they provided all the detail that they did. Um, and in this, you have highway service commercial zoning already right next door, and then you have the city industrial down the road and across the street, so the commercial light industrial, I didn't see a real big concern with it.
Kate Gomez is conditionally used, isn't he?
He had, yep, and he has a CUP already right on the corner, right next door, right on this one. So it all kinda fit within the area, um, I know some people like to see the highway service commercial, but to do all the things that they want to do, the commercial light industrial, they were all allowed uses, so that was why we went with that one. Um, it pretty much spelled it out, City of Spearfish didn't really have anything review wise, just, they just commented about the bike path. That was the only concern, just to make sure that it didn't get forgotten about.
Okay, we're done. This is a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public, if you'd like to make comment for or against this change of zoning, please stand, give your name and address.
Well, Stan, I'm just trying to comment, Tina starts.
Your name and address.
Tina Stark.
I know you're the first.
Two one three eight three Chinese Court, Deadwood, South Dakota, we live south of Deadwood. And eventually, you know, have an office for their, for our start to start landscaping at the barn, and our new venture kind of for that is Red Barn Properties, 'cause we wanna keep the, the barn, um, and even when we extend it forward and backwards, you know, keeping the barn look, keeping it red and, and making it kind of a little showpiece that's nice for that area. Um, I did, as I said, reach out to the city about the bike path, and we have some questions about the ditch that's there, we just wanna make it really nice. The bike path is gonna be awesome coming through there, we wanna make sure, because there's gonna be more traffic, um, with that, you know, making sure that it's a nice area, I don't know, I picture a bench and, you know, maybe all things like that, but, um, excited, like I, I've said it a hundred times, I'm very excited, we're very excited about the venture and trying to make that really a, a nice piece of property. We had one phone call from a neighbor behind, and they were really happy to see things getting cleaned up like you had said, and, um, and we sent a letter out with the first mailing talking about what we're doing and asking if anybody wanted to visit with us and we'd be willing to reach out, and haven't heard anything else besides the one, uh, family that called.
Okay, anyone else like to speak for or against?
Evidently they're getting along.
I, I thought, I thought the neighbor to the north might be here.
Yeah. See, no one, I'll close public hearing, bring it back to county commissioners.
Yes. I just make my comment driving by, it looks a lot nicer.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it does.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second reading.
Certainly.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a change of zoning, so we have to.
Well, you know, I, I agree, they cleaned it up real nice, um, historic weed and, and no more cotton wood issue going on.
Yeah, they're trying to be those.
Thank you, Bruce.
But, uh, just a note, this board has a history prior to Mr. Ewing being on it and myself of asking why these applicants aren't annexed. Remember the Crano-Crago annexation? And, uh, so I'm just curious why this wouldn't be annexed.
There was some discussion for us to, um, when somebody briefly asked you about that, I was kinda curious about the annexation thing too, and I think that's something that can be put down the line.
Well, I will add.
City of Spearfish did not want to annex currently.
Yeah, I'll add, they changed their demeanor.
I don't know why. They did not want to currently.
As long as we know that.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that, I live in the county.
And I don't know why, but.
But, uh, anyway, that philosophy's changed a little bit, and I, and I wanna just note that, uh, the city was not interested in that.
Yeah, and I, I, I think at this point in all honesty, I don't think we're gonna see much annexation until they get caught up.
My general suspicion would be with new mayor, all the new staff, especially the mayor and the administrator, that we probably won't do a lot of it, but I'm just trying to get a handle on what they got.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, that's just my, kinda my general.
I would.
Well, most. I think my main point is, as long as we've, we've asked the question to the city, they've recovered.
Yeah.
They, they did the, they did the whole re-persons that fit into these, uh, tools.
Yeah, yeah, they did that last, it was like eighteen months ago.
Yeah.
And historically, that's why they've been annexed.
We can use them maybe?
All right. Yeah.
So the next time, the hearing is when?
Um.
August sixteenth.
We gotta wait until the next meeting.
It's your next meeting at nine o'clock.
August sixteenth?
Mr. Chairman.
At nine AM, yes, go ahead.
I think this new zoning will allow dispensary.
With under a condition use.
And I would suggest that that would be very difficult to do because of the trail system in front of it, there would be children.
Yep.
For weather, sorry?
Dispensary.
Dispensary.
Under a condition, under a condition use permit, but, but I don't know that the trail.
Has nothing to do with you at this point.
But, I get the angle you're coming from, I just wanna agree with you.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Looks like they're gonna force you to stay with tomatoes.
Okay, so it's been a, please, yes, if you bring those to me, then we'll finalize all the conditions and stuff, right? Okay, thank you.
They.
Not conditions, changes only.
They never could get their last letter to me because they kept trying to deliver it to the house, and we're only home late at night.
Yeah.
Told them that I said that.
We're done, I think I am, 'cause we are.
You are done.
The eleven fifteen.
Yeah, you got through all the, all the stuff we're waiting for.
If we had Jennifer, we would take care of that, and we would be done.
I don't look for, not here yet.
I know, when she walks in.
Damage is in order.
We go.
Definitely.
Any items from the public?
I don't even know.
Trying to cover ground, we've got twenty minutes.
Um.
I did talk to the mayor twice, and, uh.
Mayor of.
Spearfish, I'm sorry.
Mayor Sennin.
Mayor Sennin.
I actually spent about an hour with him yesterday on the forest issues. The, uh, Nyman, Nyman spoke to him.
Did you have some.
Spearfish economics about.
Okay.
She's early, are you ready?
Am I?
You're bad. You're up.
Gosh, well, glad I could help you.
That's right. Perfect timing.
Yeah.
Do you want the?
You gotta, you gotta introduce your partner.
I will, I will. So Commissioners, this is Alex Magro, she's our summer intern, and he's a student at, um, what's his story? Southern City Christian, so he's helping us out this summer, um, just to get things done, he's been a great asset to our team so. So I, I'm gonna give these to you, but you have to give them back, is my rule, because it's a draft form, I, my staff have not had an opportunity to review all their projects yet, and, um, I'm also taking them to pasture tomorrow morning, so, um.
Should we get write messages?
You can, you can say, you get our sloppy second.
Thank you.
Druff, druff, here's an extra.
So I need it if you have it, 'cause mine is written all over, so unless, yeah, anyway.
Is yours on, Brenda? Yeah, okay. Bruce doesn't need one.
I'm good, I'll show Brenda.
So, this report you haven't seen from our organization for a very long time, um, and, and if you saw it back when Van Lindquist was in charge, it looks different now. Um, we're working on it, it's been a work in progress. Typically, this is gonna be an annual report, it'll just go from January one to December thirty first of the year, but because we haven't done this since I've been here, I started with twenty twenty and moved forward to twenty twenty-two, um, through June thirtieth of this year. So when you get the, and then in the future years, you'll get this in January as every time frame, and, um, it will just be one year's worth of work. Um, but what it will have, if you wanna flip to you guys that believe are on page fourteen, um, specific to you, uh, so it was a little bit of a challenge to go back and find, uh, you know, consistent or, or records that I was really, really comfortable with for these numbers, but every year you're gonna have the return on investment, um, I'm just gonna move forward from twenty twenty and go to the future, so. What it shows is your due paid versus your, you know, the funding assistance that's been obtained for your county. Those numbers represent all of the due paying members, so that two hundred and ninety-two isn't what you as a county have paid, it's you plus Deadwood Lead and Spearfish, 'cause they're all due paying members, and once Whitewood gets more than a thousand, they'll become a due paying member as well, more than a thousand in population. So if you look at your return on investment, uh, two hundred and fifteen to one, um, and these, this doesn't include, there's a lot of applications that have been submitted that have not been awarded yet, so in our last quarter at the council, we submitted, we had fifty-eight million dollars in submissions for funding assistance in our region, fifty-eight million dollars, which is a, that's a pretty big quarter for essentially, I have two staff, and then I've been filling in my time, and then I've had Alex and, and Kate, um, Kaylee help when they can, because we've gotten inundated with the ARPA dollars being pushed through existing programs that we administrate, and when people have a chance for grants, they're gonna go for it, and so we've had many, um, you know, you can look through and see the different entities that we work, but Powderhouse Pass, your mountain, Meadowcrest sanitary district, Cherry Trojan, uh, there's just a lot of entities, Apple Springs is, that, um, get services for free through our, our organization because you guys are a member, so you're helping a lot of people just by being a member. Right now, the, the council is kind of at a, at a place where we have currently, well, so we submitted a hundred and twenty-nine applications in this performance period, and we also have over a hundred and thirty projects on, that we are administering, and if you remember, I've got two train staff, myself, which, I'm trying to do director stuff, but I keep getting pulled back into planning just because we need me to do that work. So I will say my director side, I feel like it's, I don't say failing, but it's hanging by a thread while I'm doing, getting us through these planning cycles to get the money out. But the issue we're gonna have now is everything that gets funded has to be administered, and so we don't just do the funding applications, we administer the projects as well. And I am a little concerned that if we don't bring on another staff, like a full-time staff, we are, we're gonna get to the point where I feel like our services are not gonna be at the level that I want. Right now, our relationship with our members and those people we're serving are, are really good because the level of service my staff are providing. If you've ever worked with Luzanne or Bill, they're very thorough, they care deeply about their work being correct and, and right. And unfortunately for them, I think because we're so busy right now, there's things that are having to not meet our own standard. And so we're really hoping, um, in September, October timeframe to be, uh, comfortable that we can, that we can hire another staff, because it's one thing to get the money, you know, apply for the money, get the funding applications in, but I'm just looking at this huge influx of projects that are gonna have to be administered, and I know that we don't have the capacity right now the way we are, or we're gonna start dropping, you know, really important things are gonna get missed, and we wanna always have this reputation of just providing excellent service and doing a great job. So I do need another staff person, um, I can talk, you know, briefly about the conversations we've had, uh, with our member representatives, so Randy is obviously the guy who gets to come to our meetings and also gets to run it, we've trusted him with the gavel, um, we're kicking him out after the next meeting, but, uh.
Good, oh.
Uh, no, I've actually really enjoyed working with, with Randy, to the point where, um, I did ask him and the other executive board members to stay on for a second year, typically they change every year, but he's kinda got the same mindset as me, it's for people who like to get things done, and we had a lot of motivation that, uh, first year that he was kind of the guy in charge, and we didn't wanna lose that, um, just working within the council to make sure that we're organized and just doing everything the way it should be done. So looking at our dues, um, we had an interesting dues structure, and you're, you're one of the counties that has something a little bit different than what our, maybe our other counties are doing. Um, really what I wanted to establish this year is just a uniform fifty-two cents per capita for all of our members. So it's very easy, if somebody asks, what are your rates, we can say fifty-two cents per capita, you can go to the census, fill up your census, and that is your number. Um, that is a little different than how we did it before, before we did your census minus, uh, dues paying numbers. There's a couple of reasons why I wanna go away from that, one is you have entities like Fox Dellers that are half in, half out, um, you know, in Pennington, so the way I split that affects my county dues, um, so there's a lot of math, you know, not a lot, not hard math, but just every year I have to sit down and think about, okay, what are we doing and how are we applying it, um, so really just wanna establish uniformity within our own organization. Now, you guys are a little different because the way your county has always done dues is the county, they figure out what the total is for your county between Spearfish, Deadwood Lead, and yourself, and then you pay fifty percent of that, twenty-five percent is Spearfish, and twelve and a half goes to those other two entities, Deadwood and Lead. Um, the burden has shifted a little bit if we do fifty-two cents per capita, I'm willing to still honor those very long age-old relationships you have and, and the, the way that you've done it, if the county and the cities wanna continue doing it that way, um, but what I don't have is something in writing to support it. And so for me, when I first came in, I was trying to figure out what everyone was doing and why is it different, just going forward, if I ever am not here, I would like for the next person who comes into this, or just when I get old and can't remember anymore, to know what, what are we doing and why. So again, I don't, I'm not saying you can't do it that way, I just want it to be supported by an agreement that's signed by all of you, and it doesn't have to be redone every year unless, you know, unless you think it needs to be, um, but simply just something in writing to support what we're doing and why your dues are, look different than what every other county is doing. So, any questions so far, you look like you have one, but maybe you just wanna take on me. Um, so going back to the number, every June, um, May-June timeframe, we try to get a assessment notice, am I, are we going over?
You're doing fine.
No, you're way ahead.
Uh, we provide an assessment notice to our members to let them know for the budgeting cycle, what you're going to pay in the following year. My first two years as director, that was easy because we hadn't made a change in dues for over ten years, and so, and then we didn't have any census numbers yet, so I didn't have to make a change. Then when I started looking at the numbers, um, you know, fifty-two cents per capita, not changing that, or, or essentially, um, fifty-two cents per capita just using the new growth that we had, it really only generated a difference of about eleven thousand dollars per year for us, but the differences were different than we were before, I'm a full-time director, the director before was part-time, and then we've also brought on a new staff person. Kaylee is the person who does our comprehensive planning, zoning, uh, changes, uh, mitigation planning, and even, even that work is almost too much for her right now. We have nine long-range plans to do in the next year and choose one person, it's, it's a lot of data collection, and it's, it's really just too much for one person. So I'm either gonna have to step in, or if we can get to the point of hiring, that's really the goal, and then that'll probably change, so after we have this huge influx of a stimulus, you know, lots of extra work, we'll have a couple of people in the office that will be to the point where they can retire, and if we're back at a, a normal, normal workload, we can just choose not to replace that person, so it's kind of a, a situation where it would hopefully, you know, resolve itself. Um, so your dues did go up, uh, you probably noticed that, are there questions at all, part of that is the, just the new, uh, population, but part of it is the, the way, you know, the, the recommendation that I've made on how we calculate those dues. And I, I did go back, um, to see what we were doing before, but I also went and looked across the state what the other planning districts are doing. If you look at them, um, none of them, none of them are as low as we are, and all of them have basically a base plus fifty-two cents per capita, but it's not fifty-two cents per capita, so like Seacog, the, the Sioux Falls district, they have a ninety-nine hundred dollar base, so, for every county, so like even Bennett County or Harding County or Beale, if we did something like that, they would be forced to do almost ten grand a year, um, plus they do a dollar three per capita. So, and again, maybe you don't wanna be compared to Sioux Falls, but even Aberdeen, I think they were at a four thousand five hundred dollar base plus a dollar fifty-seven per capita. So, um, one way or another, I'll just say our, our counties out here are below, and I would say the services we provide to our counties here are much higher because in the eastern part of the state, we don't have as many HOAs that are their independent water systems, sanitary districts, rural water, most of them are just on the large rural water systems that are outside of city, so, um, we have kind of a huge workload that comes along with providing services to road districts, sanitary districts, HOAs, fire districts, they're all eligible to come ask us for assistance through your membership. Um, so I'll stop there, are there any questions, any, any issues, anything, I mean, hit me with anything you've got.
Go ahead, Randy. Well, a couple of things, the, uh, the council government struggled with this decision, but when we realized our rates are less than conception, almost, of the organization, or at least our first decade of it, we realized that our services have gone up infinite, so much, and the rates have risen or so well. And, uh, the whole dynamics of the organization and involvement have changed. So what, what our board did, and I don't know if Jennifer covered this, but our board approved these rates based on ratification from our members. So the board was hoping to have comments back before they ratified the rate increase, so this is, part of her mission here is to get those comments back.
But really, yeah, and, and from the day I started, I wanted to be the director that comes out and, and presents this performance report to you every year. I just got inundated, kinda towed under my first year with CARES and then ARPA, and who would've known that before I took the job? So, so again, um, going forward, you will, you will see me every, once a year at least, um, unless I'm doing planning work, that'll get me out in front of you more often. Um, and you'll get this annual performance report, so you can see in writing what it is we're working on, what it is we're doing in your county, and other, the rest of the region. It does, um, ebb and flow, so I've been told by another director, oh, this could create you problems, and I said, I, I don't care, those are problems I'm willing to take on by, I want my members to be able to see, but sometimes you get counties that are comparing, you know, well, they got more services, or they're, they're, well, there's gonna be years where we do a lot in Lawrence, um, if you look at Harding County, they have one project, um, you know, but they're still paying fifty-two cents per capita. So again, it's, we're trying, I'm trying to create uniformity, but also, you know, have fairness within our own organization, so that if anybody calls, it's really easy to, to tell them what our rates are, and, and then always willing to take comments and questions.
Rended our budget, uh, requi, our budget currently includes the increase.
Yes, it does.
Go ahead, Mr. Sleep.
Um, well, I'd like to say that, uh, we represent a lot of, uh, organizations that do different things, uh, many of the bodies bunches yours, but they all have a cost of living rate every year for, for different reasons and, and that, and we don't always, uh, look at that or, or do that when you get here. Expect them to help by, by going with different revenues and ways of, that's kinda earning money too. And, uh, so that's a question I have a task for yours, you get, you get right in there now, and so, when I'm thinking about it, I, I always use the thought process of return before they wanna pay more.
Sure, so.
Wanna start now?
Well, maybe you can give an example of the grant program that you had that actually paid for the employment of one of your people.
Sure, so you guys, if you look in the report, are only, our membership dues are only eighteen percent of our total budget. Um, we actually write a grant for ourselves every year, this, a planning grant through EDA, uh, we also contracted the state to administer their programs in the Department, we have the Governor's Office of Economic Development and South Dakota Housing, that are annual contracts that get renewed for us to help roll out, market, do the application work for those programs. And then we also have local contract income, which is those things that we can charge above and beyond membership for, so, for example, a cop plan is increased just because of the amount of work that goes into it, um, mitigation plans, we write grants to cover the cost of that. So if you do your mitigation plan through us, it'll cost you zero dollars, we will write an application for seventy-five percent, and the other twenty-five percent, we help you collect in, in kind by bringing the public into the meetings and collecting in kind for everyone who shows up to those meetings, so, um, so I, I think you're on to something though. We did discuss the possibility of having, instead of waiting ten years and then getting a big increase, analyzing this and doing a small incremental increase, whether it's one percent or two percent, all of the other districts are doing three percent, except one, they do inflation, and they said, well, except this year, eight and a half percent was like, would've blown the hair off our members, so we, you know, obviously they did something different, but all of the other districts have something built in where they are doing incremental increases every year, so that they don't have the situation where it's like, hey, you know, ten years goes by and now it seems huge. One thing I will say about our current dues structure is we are collecting less now than we were, and have for the last ten years than we were in the year two thousand. So I'll say if, if, if anything were at least efficient at getting work done, um, I, I never wanna raise costs on members, and I have no intention of sitting on a pile of money. I think our, our financial requirement is that we have, um, eighteen, eighteen months of operating revenue, so we stick at that, and then, um, anything above that, obviously there were two years where we did reimbursements back to our members, I would not anticipate doing that again under my direction unless we were just sitting on a ridiculous amount of cash, but, um, but really I think what I would do is just spend dues for people for a year or something, rather than getting to a situation where, hey, I'm giving it back to you and now I'm asking for it back, is essentially what I feel like I'm doing now, so, um.
We have different people that give you, like, money over the state or whatever, so you can use that opportunity.
So that's a proportion, but, yeah, um, like I said, our dues are, it, it looks like the, for twenty twenty-one, the membership dues were eighteen percent, it's almost nineteen percent of our, of our operating, our income, our revenue. Um, part of that though, um, we wrote a grant for a new physician, and for two years it covered, but now that grant has expired, so her position pays for itself, if she does five plans or three plans in a year, depending on the cost of those plans, because we charge for those plans, the cop plans, um, uh, mitigation plans, those are enough to cover her salary, so she's not, not necessarily the issue, I guess if we're gonna put figures, I would say I'm the issue because we had a part-time director, and the group before me did nothing to plan for having a full-time director, so there was no plan in place to cover the cost of me being a full-time employee under this organization, so. So we're good, we were able to cover it with local contracts, but, um, it wouldn't sustain itself if we kept going the way we are.
Mr. General.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I've contemplated this and I think it's, it's interesting that they're able to come up with eighty-two percent of their budget from other sources, which is different from a lot of groups we support. But I also contemplated if we didn't join. Then each of these districts would be paying their full fees for every hour that they do. So the road districts, the sand districts, uh, townships, any grants, cities, any of the grants that they're doing, they would be paying at the regular, like, full fees.
Sure.
So I think the bang for buck is, is a very positive amount. And I think the people that are using them, like, uh, Dermont Sanitary District, they've, they're after another two million, they had three million, I think they got before. Just them having the ability to do that, because we're requiring those infrastructure improvements in the county's court. So it's a pretty cheap way to get them done, service members or people that live in the county. So I see a lot of, of pros to this and I am struggling finding cons. And it's just went growing into a really dynamic organization compared to what it used to be and it takes money to run those. And obviously the ARPA funds changed some of those dynamics. And then the state put funds out there and how many applications did you have to do in one day? It was just incredible. And it had to be done that day because of the way the state monitored the money. So, so I, I'm, uh, along with, of course, being on the board makes a difference, but this wasn't an easy decision and I think it's a pretty good solution.
Just for perspective, uh, one of those SRS applications cost us about thirty-eight hundred to four thousand dollars, year one. And I think we had over twelve in your county alone. So, um, just, just understanding the cost to actually do that, um, again, you know, if I, everybody participating, that's what makes it work. So you're not losing money on some of these when you're assisting. But, um, so yeah, just kinda some perspective, you know.
Any others, go ahead.
What, so when you say that you're doing fifty-two cents per capita, what are you using? Are you using the census? Census, so, cause when I, I was just, just like math and how'd you come up with the ten thousand?
Oh, so that is your fifty percent.
Okay, sorry.
So I'm, I, I was honoring what you guys already had in place.
Yeah.
So you're actually thirteen thousand-ish is where you get, would be. But I, and I'll leave it up to the county, I don't wanna disrupt something that's working. Um, Sharon Martinescu from the City Council of Deadwood, you know, she looked at hers and was concerned. Um, and I said, well, you know, if this doesn't work for Deadwood, then we might need to go back and reevaluate this fifty, you know, because they, their dues would technically be about six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So they make up to the thirty?
Twelve and a half percent.
I understand, I understand.
And we, yep. And it, and I, I don't know, I mean, I can make my guesses about why that was done that way in the past, but I, I won't, I'll just, I, so yes, that is honoring the fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Altus.
You're also helping coordinate the counties in their efforts. I put a resolution on there regarding the, uh, the Forest Service as well. So that's something additional that your service that you're providing.
Right.
I, I, I can't imagine that that's, that, well, it's gotta be a lot of time.
It is. I, I spent this past weekend reading the twenty-twelve planning rule because I wanted to be in, very sure that what I was putting in the process that we wrote was accurate and correct and without knowing what was in the planning rule for the, the Forest Service Plan Management. Um, I just, I wanted to make darn sure. So, so I am putting in, you know, time on that and, and I'm happy to do it. I just wish I could do it better. I feel like I have the capacity or the, the ability, I should say, to be able to guide our counties in this process, but I, I just don't have the time right now. And I hate, I hate telling my members that I don't have time to do something. So I assisted with this, um, assisting with the process, I don't know if you shared that or?
Well, not yet.
Okay, but it's not quite ready to go, but for the comments that will be provided for this Forest Service revision to their plan.
Well, I'll add that, that, you know, she's facilitated the meetings through the five counties. She's, all five counties are members, right? And then the, the meetings with the Wyoming County, she's facilitated when we've invited them to participate too. So it's been a big asset just having somebody set the meeting down. Um, Deadwood, Deadwood was good enough to lend us their visitor center conference room for our last meeting of the Wyoming and South Dakota counties. And, and Jennifer quickly during the meeting put the resolution together, which is great. And, and now she's working on the preamble to the, to the comments. And so it's been invaluable and there's no charge for that, right? So we've been able to use those resources. Um, I think that regarding Moore County with this, uh, quasi-agreement we have that we have to get buy-in from the cities and draft some people. So we have it moving forward. Have you talked to those cities yet?
I didn't wanna disrupt the apple cart because if they say no, it will impact Moore's by three grand. So I didn't, I, the cities have not complained and part of that is they know they've grown, maybe it doesn't affect them quite as much. The only one I would wanna reach back out to is Deadwood because she did say.
Spirit Fish is Apple County, you know.
Yeah, they're getting.
And they didn't complain, I mean.
Go ahead, Randy.
So what, I guess, so I just understand, so no other county does it this way? We're the only ones that, that char- that you charge Deadwood leads in Spirit Fish? And Whitewood not yet because they don't have a thousand?
Right, so in our other counties, it's just fifty-two cents per capita for any, anybody over a thousand.
Gotcha.
But if you look at Deadwood, they would be, if they didn't, if you guys didn't do it this way, they would only pay six hundred and thirty-five dollars a year and you guys would pay thirteen, so.
Now, so you're counting the population in all of the county? Or the population in the county except the cities?
Nope, county.
Cause that's the thing is, if the cities dropped out, we would cover them. If the city of Deadwood wasn't a member, if it does, we're a member, they would get covered? Is that what it does?
Uh, it's pretty much the way our JCA is written is if you're over a thousand, you're a member.
Or you're not.
Or, or you don't.
So they wouldn't enjoy.
Yeah.
True. So they're, they're getting.
So they wouldn't get the services.
Some of them are, some of them aren't.
As I said, it's cyclical, but I, I haven't done it so much for Deadwood, um, as I have for the county, um, since I've been here. But again, it's cyclical and I can go back historically and we have done a part of it for Deadwood, but, um.
Explain Pennington and Rapid quickly.
Oh, well, just how theirs, so they were getting a pretty big discount cause it was Pennington minus Rapid City and part of Fox Elder. And so Pennington went from paying, um, like fourteen thousand a year and it's, under this, it'll go to fifty-two thousand a year. And so they are a little bit different in that I didn't want to shock them with that. So I, I asked them if it would work to split that into, you know, three years to get them up to that because I don't want anybody's budget to get blown up on my behalf. But we've done some, a lot of work with Pennington County. They chose to do the sub awards, their ARPA dollars, not a good idea. So we had to create all of the two CFR two hundred procurement policy documents for their sub grantee and it's been, uh, they're getting their money for it. Otherwise, they would've had to hire somebody, a, a full-time person that's got legal background and it, it would've been expensive, so.
That's in perpetuity. You do that for the length of the fund.
Yeah, it's.
But there are a lot of, they wanna be careful where you put the money because otherwise you're mon- you're monitoring it and reporting on it, it costs more than the money itself.
I've already had a request for the document, I know it's a draft. Um, so two questions, do you mind if the draft gets shared, noting that it's a draft? Or, or do you have, anticipate that the final will be out and I can share that at some point here, sooner or later?
I was hoping that I could give you the final on August first and you could put it on your website, if that.
Seems very fair.
So I.
Jackie's listening, Jackie, August first, Monday?
That is, that is my plan.
She's on the screen, how do we, screens are off.
She's listening.
She's listening.
Is she a county or?
She's a press, press.
I've got it off cause we've got.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
So do you need anything from us?
Not efficient.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for all the work you do.
Is this a goal for you guys to get to?
We already adopted it today. I don't know about the other counties.
Um.
You might send out a.
Needs was evident, I was just there. And they said, well, that's a lot and we don't know if any, and so I.
Seven minutes.
Right.
We haven't heard from them twice. We should contact Paul River and let them know.
And I'm gonna be in front of them next week.
You might let him know, he might want to already.
Lance or?
Uh, Les Cole.
Oh.
Okay. He was, I think he might've got a motion already. The last meeting was last Thursday.
I've got the resolution, I, I, or uploaded it to the, to the site and I, uh, we've sent email copies and hard copies to both Steve and to, uh, to Jeff. And I, I copied Jennifer in on the email as well.
And Lou, we should probably CC him too.
I don't know if I have Lou's.
Lee Conroy, Lou Conroy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jennifer. Food is here.
Food is here? I haven't, I haven't sat right out there with her name on the pizza sandwich. Your tunes, you're gonna have to open it up cause one has jalapenos and one doesn't.
You put jalapeno, right?
No.
Well, I wanted jalapeno chips.
I don't know, so you guys ordered the same thing. Well, no, there's jalapeno chips there, but, um, there's, you guys have the.
Jackie, we're gonna, whoever else is listening, we're gonna put this on mute, um, while we talk about lunch, when business is back to being transacted again, we'll come back on. I don't know when that's gonna be, it's just the budget at this point. So we are in recess, morning of the chairman.
Going back live. Do you remember who's listening? The commission is back.
We are back. We're in our budget hearing session. We're gonna start with planning and zoning, Budget 711. Amber's in the room. All the candidates commissioners are present. Go ahead.
I don't really have anything besides, I mean, I gave you guys everything I usually do from, I have a written budget proposal, salary, and all of that is based off of what you guys decide to do with all that, cost of living and stuff. Assets wise, a lot of it doesn't change. Professional services, there's an increase in there. And that is, we're getting to a point that sometimes it would be maybe beneficial for us to be able to have a surveyor or engineer or somebody look at documents that maybe we need some help with. We've never really done that, but I don't know what's gonna happen, you know, going into next year with Allen being done. And we don't really know who we're gonna have in that position. So that was their publications. As of right now, we're sitting pretty good with our newspaper being at five thousand. Sometimes we go more, sometimes we go less. It just kinda depends on the year and what we have for publications. Vehicle maintenance, we're increasing. Actually, no, that one decreased just a tad. A truck's getting up there in mileage, so we might have to start looking at some little bit more major repairs. But for next year, I think we're okay. We do have one thing going on right now, the check engine's light on, but I don't really know how to make ends that.
Black cable, red tape.
They've tried, they've tried to fix it and they can't figure out.
What does it say? I think, I think nine times out of ten, it's the gas cap, or else it's like six hundred, seven hundred bucks.
And they even, we already replaced the one thing, the sensor thing that they thought it was, but it's not that. So finally, we're just like, well, we'll drive it till I get it, you know, just drive.
They really find the problem.
Yeah, they can't really figure out what it is. So I just kept it at a thousand. I guess if it comes down to it, I can come and ask if something crazy happens and we need to deal with it. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, other than that, do you want me to go through, I mean, nothing really has changed in our normal stuff. I think publishing, copy and making all of that is the same. The nuisance complaints, we're keeping it at ten. Like this year, we haven't really used very much, 'cause so far, everybody's been kind of working on it themselves. And we haven't had to dip into that, but we're not through the end of the year yet, so I guess we'll see. Travel, we have an increase there. That was the one that I had talked about in here. Yep, the travel is probably the biggest one. Say that again?
I figured it was around five thousand dollars. That way, you got ninety, ninety thousand budgeted there.
Um, I have six thousand budgeted for travel. Total travel, but that's your mileage for board members. Your SDPA stays the same. Western planner and Rocky Mountain land use is the increase that you see. Building inspector, code enforcement training, we're not, I don't know why it says platting in there. That's not right. But that stays the same.
Should it be two thousand?
Yes, it should be two thousand.
Then that, then that would go up to, would that increase that to eleven nine, or is it ninety nine, right?
It's probably gonna increase it. I didn't see that. It's right on this one, the one that goes in there. I just break it out so you can see what the changes are.
Did you include any travel to that? Or sort of, you can engage with?
That's not a good year, so. So we've got, that was this year's budget. Next year's, it was really hard to budget. That's why you see such the increase, because like Rocky Mountain land use last, I was budgeted to go this year. Last minute, they switched it to online, so they refunded us, I believe, some money there. But I don't know what to expect next year. And then the Western planner, and I put that in here. It's a big conference. It'll be in Alaska this year, and that happens like once every twenty years. They don't ever go to Alaska. But I'd really like to attend. I've already been asked to probably speak there. So I wanted to give you guys plenty of notice that that's where it is, but I have no idea what that's going to cost.
Well, it's about, uh...
I don't know.
Tickets, ten thousand dollars. I just had paid everything to go, and I couldn't go.
This one won't be that much.
No, it won't be, 'cause you only have one person paying ticket, but the plane is expensive, the motel rooms are super expensive.
Right now...
And the vehicle is super, super expensive.
Well, what we got from the budget, the preliminary budget that they've done, room rates, they were looking at only about a hundred and fifty bucks a night wherever they were able to host it.
When is it?
Well, either August or September. They don't know yet for sure. And then I looked from Rapid over at about eight hundred dollars for an airline ticket in Vancouver right now. And I'm looking, I mean, it's August, so I thought, well...
Ireland is six hundred bucks in September.
Yeah, it was kind of comparable. I figured, well, August now shouldn't be maybe too much.
Mine was about eighteen hundred, and the rooms were like five to seven hundred a night.
Yeah, no, it's, it's pretty reasonable, and now those are all preliminary, 'cause they won't sign the contract until next.
If you get that cheap, it's well made.
But that's why I, and if I can't go, then I would actually let you know. Or we're still contemplating whether SDPA is gonna have a local conference again. So if that's the case, I have nine hundred budgeted for local, but we may do a joint like we did this year with North Florida.
Do they, if you go and speak, do they refund any of your fees?
It's hit or miss. Sometimes, SDPA, if I go, I'm pretty sure SDPA will help cover the costs, because I doubt we'll have that many personnel to go to go, so I can use their funds more than likely.
So the ten thousand is still in there for nuisance?
Yes, yes. I could. I'd drive the billings, drive the billings by... Right now, they're not any cheaper.
I like Gillette, 'cause it's got good parking. They'll charge you to park.
I don't mind. I've looked out at Casper, out of Gillette, both, but right now, they're comparable to Rapid. But I don't know that.
Look at the ninety-six hundred you have down for two thousand twenty-three, and then I go back to two thousand twenty-one, 'cause that's the last four years that's just already on there. I calculate the extra that'll be from there to, to what you budgeted.
Yep.
I come up with around five thousand dollars.
Um, if you look at back, so if you look at this sheet, I was at eighty-one hundred in twenty-twenty-one, and I'm asking for ninety-nine for twenty-twenty-three.
Actually, it's eleven.
But twenty-twenty...
Eleven-nine, yeah, it's a little over, not quite five thousand.
Twenty-twenty-one, she just traveled.
I didn't travel at all.
So that's why it, that's why it looks...
That's why it jumped out.
I budgeted for eighty-one hundred, but we didn't end up going anywhere. That was because of COVID.
Yep, yep, yep. Good observation.
Anyone else have questions for Amber?
I had, uh, one concern there. Have you hired two people, or just one person?
One.
One. And, uh, you put down, uh, besides, uh, like last year, you put down fifteen hundred dollar raise, and the year before, fifteen hundred dollar raise, maybe some more the year before that. And when he gaves out, uh, five percent raise, fifteen hundred dollars, uh, from federal, my brand. Then whatever he got along, and I like that.
So two, twenty-twenty-one, I didn't ask for anything. Twenty-twenty-two, this year's budget, you guys gave the, whatever you guys gave, and then the bonus like that that you gave.
This year and last year was fifteen hundred.
For twenty-twenty-three, I'm, no, I didn't get anything in twenty-twenty-one, despite whatever you guys chose to do.
Well, I thought it was on there. I, I had to look, but oh, man, it was the same.
Twenty-twenty-one, I didn't ask for anything. Last year, it was the cost of living that was requested, and I don't remember what you guys ended up doing for twenty-twenty-two, for this year's budget. I had a two, five, and you did the bonus. And then this year, I'm asking for just the base salary, 'cause obviously, whatever you guys decide to do was up to you. So I am asking for an increase in my base salary.
On the building permit side, how much have you budgeted for a review of commercial buildings?
Possibly looking at that in that professional services, if need be.
'Cause we're gonna see an increase there, because if Tom retires, he's been good enough to review those scores for nothing. We're not gonna have that resource. If he retires, it's a discretion, he's new building inspector. He saves us thousands and thousands of dollars every year. He reviews the one outside the three mile.
Yeah, whoever we have a commercial question, he'll help. He'll review it from a commercial standpoint, 'cause we don't usually talk about it.
I think, I think having that professional services out there for platting and building plan review is a good idea. We could also take it from Minnesota if they had to.
Yeah, I think overall, so far, we've been able to use some of that money, if we don't use the nuisance stuff. But I just, I never know.
Well, it's hard to predict.
And sometimes, we may not need it at all. It just, it depends on what kind of projects we have going on.
Do we do the plan review up at Potterhouse Pass on our commercial?
No, they're not commercial, but...
About their clubhouse, clubhouse.
The clubhouse isn't considered commercial. I do know that we've asked questions. Like if he sees something that's weird, luckily, again, we've been able to contact Tom and say, hey, can you look at this? Mainly, it's like the mechanical side of stuff that they're, 'cause they have the pool. They have some kind of odd stuff that we don't, we don't do a lot of. But we've always just utilized Tom. He's been kind of there to help us with it.
He's retired.
Yeah, I don't know when yet.
I don't know when, considering.
I heard first here.
I was gonna say, Jamie left, so I imagine her name won't be far behind, her husband that works in the building.
Dennis?
Yeah, Dennis.
You think he's gonna retire as well?
I would, I would guess.
In a couple of years of, um, I heard.
Yeah, a few. I don't think he's gonna leave this year. Unfortunately, the HVAC guy will still be there.
Right, he's a good pick.
So yeah, it's a concern. Well, look where they, Tom was really nice to us about that. He didn't have to...
My supplies. Yeah, I don't really, we don't... Yeah, the, we, you know, we were able to purchase the new computer and stuff. We had to purchase that already when we hired Jeffy. So I actually decreased. Um, we had five thousand budgeted last year for that new employee book. Remember, we moved ahead, so I was able to decrease it, 'cause we've already paid for all of her stuff. So we got a computer and a desk. We've already done that, so I was able to decrease it this year.
Uh, to refresh my memory, what's the wage increase requested by the Department of Ed?
Five.
Five.
And then the new, that new pay schedule?
I'll, I'll do, uh...
That was previously, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's in the front of your, under wages.
How do you expect, uh, different, there's three, three schedules to do there in four months or five months?
Put it within your budget, whatever you're, whatever you want to do with your employees for that coming year. You put that, you budget for it. If you wanna move to a grade two, you would put the grade two budget in there, that amount in there.
For next year.
For next year, yeah, wherever they would be, yeah, so, yeah. And we use, and we use that pay scale when we budgeted, that proposed, we plug those figures in. So if that's not approved, I'll have to go in and remove it.
Well, you talked about in the sheriff's office, even, uh, if those were budgeted, you just let us know they didn't rather, or to approve it all the time, 'cause it was always in the budget, but hasn't had big problems away. So the total increase is the, uh, six percent, twenty-one, all five, two, including wages?
Whatever. Yeah, six point three percent.
Yeah, that's what I have.
I can grab, get you guys that.
And there's five percent for wages, actually.
Uh, I believe you put that in there.
Yes, I did. Yep.
The only thing, I guess I'm not sure, you might wanna double check this, Brenda, is on those base wages, I don't know if those got updated to whatever you're new proposed.
I believe they did.
Just to make sure on that sheet.
I believe they did.
'Cause they changed a little bit off and on there towards the end.
Yeah, I think we got them updated. That kind of gives us, you probably have that, Brandon, that's, that's right on.
I think the only other thing I wanted to mention to you guys, and I had sent this by email to you after the last meeting. It was a comparison from the planning zoning office to other places. The question had, I think Richard was the one that I'd asked, just, you know, as you were talking about that wage scale stuff. The comparisons, we don't compare in my job in any other county, but it was just kind of interesting breaking it down. I shared it with you, just so you have. You know, you have the information, you know, based on what other places are doing.
I had, uh, collected that information, and we got, so it's council, local government before, but they, it's not, it's too much, it's hard to do it.
Yeah, it was, this was just me going out to the government website. I could pull pretty much all the information from our local one.
They're hard to get, some of them.
Yeah. Well, the flood cleaning administrator, just to give you an idea, I mean, their advertising spearfish is at twenty-seven thirty-nine to forty-one sixty-seven an hour right now, and I'm doing that as part of my job now. And then planners range anywhere from eighty-two. Rapid is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which is lapable. She's on the high end, but she's been there thirty-two years, I think, or something.
How long have you been there?
Two thousand four.
I hired her.
I guess that's, I mean, unless you have specific, I think those were probably the points you wanted to look at, or, you know, I figured it'd be the, and the, and the, with the travel, who knows? There's so much unknown with that between now and the following August. I don't even know what's gonna happen, like, and it may not even work out. Um, it'd be the same as what it normally would be, five, a week. I'm usually gone four to five days with. This time, I get to go to North Dakota. Next month is coming up pretty soon.
I'm waiting for that big rebate on our fees, we're seeking. Do I have to pay, do I have to pay fees?
No.
Okay, great.
I already took care of that part.
Thank you.
If you're going to spend...
I'm going from here, just to, wait.
Well, you just have to tell me what, how many days you're gonna do that. It'll just be a day pass or a...
We also have time at the end to go through. Thank you, Amber.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Brenda.
Yes, we'll beat Tim up. He's here.
Yeah, I apologize for checking that handbook boxes that's yours this morning. Or did you have a question for me?
I don't know if there's a specific question.
I've got a generic one. What is going on with software? Is it getting better? Yeah, Brenda can attest to it. It's kind of, oh, Ellen's been a nightmare, in a nutshell. But we're getting that, just low, we're working on it.
Is there, is there, the money that we spent, is there recourse to recover some of that? Talk to take it to court, figure something else?
We haven't had any of those discussions yet.
How much, how much money did we spend? Three hundred thousand?
Two, it was two something, and then, of course, it was service, it was two, I thought it was two twenty something, but then the annuals maintenance was thirty something dollars.
Right, and it's still not, still not completely usable at this point. We've now had a, a year plus installed, and two years, almost three years.
Pennington County and Mead County are experiencing similar and/or different problems as well.
Is it about time to look at, do we join forces with them and having a lawsuit, if they try to recover money?
That's kind of been our dilemma, is, is there's so much effort that's been involved in at this point.
I guess I don't know that everybody's aware, the software that we spend all that money on for utilization, that was supposed to match up with everybody else, and is having a lot of issues.
And I, I think most of the blame, when I, when we bought this software, I assumed it could generate a notice and actually generate a report that would balance. That's my bad. And Pennington, they'd used it, and it wasn't until after we had started down the road that I realized that Pennington County really was only using it as a placeholder, had your name value, and that was it. They had never generated a notice and never really run any reports off of it. They literally grabbed numbers and they did another separate software. That's my bad, I guess, when I'm drilling into that deeper. Why would they spend that much money for that kind of, for a database?
This is a software they had down there.
This is a software we had down there, it's been bought up and has been, they've had this particular software on there probably for fifteen years.
Right.
But.
This, this may not be, if they have a discussion, if they have it parked, set down and said, what's going on and what can we do or?
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand you. I probably.
Well, you guys have frustration. It's just a lot of money to spend on something that you're having so much issue with.
Yeah. Well, not only that, the downtime, you're losing productivity on downtime, and it's something that didn't work.
I, I think, I have some point, at the, at the very least, we're gonna have to have a discussion with them about starting over our, our period again, because we have not had any, really any functionality out of this since we've had it. And so that's, we haven't gotten it fixed yet, so, but we're having meetings, I mean, we have Brenda and Tim and Brett and Greg have devoted hours to this. There's just no doubt about that, and we, we, it seems to be a slippery slope. We ha, we have hard, hard time getting traction. We seem to make a little bit of progress, and before you know it, we, we, we will gain a little bit, but we slipped back again. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's constant. We tried being mad at them, tried to be nice with them, and, um, you know.
I think we need to start that soon enough. We expect free support till this is resolved.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I don't have any arguments with you.
They haven't been billing us for anything like that, have they?
Yes, but it still doesn't work.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I, I don't see you on salary here. I'm retiring at the end of the year, gentlemen.
So you're making the assumption that we're appointing Brett?
I'm just, the only person who raised their hand in my office was Brett, and so I, she was involved with me on my budgeting, and I said, so what do you wanna work for? And I let her set that number, and that's something I guess you two, you guys are gonna hire now. I.
Well, if you hire.
If you hire, I, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, I think, I think your budget should reflect your position at your existing pay and her position at her existing pay, and then we don't make an assumption on the budget.
Yeah.
So I think that should be modified.
Okay.
And one of the new hires of one day, I think, was, right, one of them?
Uh.
So that's how the budget should be. This is presumptuous.
Yeah, I, 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 I just, I was, yeah.
I'm glad you put it in there to inform us, but at the same time.
If anything, I guess I was trying to air, air on the high side.
I think having her at her normal wages and you at your normal, your, your, or your replacement.
Just leave that in there as, so leave it as Tim and then the gal she, the gal you just hired then, would I put, well.
Well, yeah, the, the new hires up there.
Is to replace Ben, right?
Is to replace Ben.
So this will be.
Right, and Ben was, and then even after I'm gone, there'll be a new hire who will, to replace another assessor, because I will also be gone.
Right.
If you, if you don't hire outside.
But.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I guess I, I guess I, worst case scenario.
I would think we'd wanna modify that.
Right.
Yep. Gives us a better window.
Yeah, and that's why I'm kinda, kinda giving you guys enough heads up. I don't leave anybody to lurch and hopefully have a.
Well, I hadn't seen your letters yet, however.
No.
He doesn't realize slaves have to be sold. They can't just.
Yeah.
I will modify that.
Anyone else have questions for Tim?
Marshall and Swift there.
Yeah. I think there's a couple of things in there, but yeah, that's to buy our latest cost tables from Marshall and Swift, and one, it will be loaded into our computer. And I think eventually them numbers are gonna roll into that Tyler service contract, but right now that's what we pay those guys just for our cost and service, our get a cost tables for everything we do. Yeah, and it's just like everything else. I, I'm just frustrated. Everybody at this table, it never stops going up on everything right now.
Go ahead, Brian.
So on your capital assets, you have two HP notebooks for fieldwork at fifteen hundred total. And then you have one, uh, laptop per office at a thousand. Can you check those? I'm not sure you can buy them that cheap.
I saw him talk with Greg one time about it, and we should have been in the ballpark, but I figured, at worst case scenario, there were laptops in the field. I put them in there because I keep thinking, one of the days this software will work and I get an argument on that. And, and it's there, we can, I can rob from that for the other laptop if it goes through the roof, I can kinda cover that.
And then this forty-five hundred and sixty dollars for replacements, is that your cycle?
Yeah, yeah, that's usually about right. I usually have something, one or two crap out or something, or a monitor. I've had a couple of sudden two monitors go bad, that's, it kinda covers it. Um, yeah, I was running short.
So we're actually decreasing that.
Yeah, that one we would.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Tim.
You're entirely welcome, guys, and if you have any other questions, I'm not, I'm on the same side with you guys, whatever you want.
No, I, I just wondering, I knew there was issues, and you just kinda hear a little rumble of it, and I don't know what the status was, and I just wonder if it's kinda, shift gears to the legal letter portion of the purchase.
Yeah, we'll see what happens on Friday. We'll have another meeting. If, if these things can balance, if we can get our reports to finally balance, and we can get numbers to Brendan, that balances. And we can actually get it to where prints are darn notice. Those two major hurdles, we can, we can get this done. And we knew it was gonna be about seventeen year project to get everybody's value over and using live numbers. Uh, Mike and I and Brett are constantly working on here, what's the best way to handle it? Because originally we were going literally record by record, line by line conversion, and now we're kinda thinking, we might tear the Band-Aid off and not necessarily worry about, we call it a DRC, and they call it paving concrete, not necessarily worry about line by line, but get onto the software, get the new costs working properly, and then we can do those conversions along with. So, yeah, we're constantly working on it, but those two issues, I gotta get Brenda's numbers for, in the state, of course, we got our abstract that they're bringing down our neck on.
Are you gonna hold Brian, please?
Resolved, and who knows, we, every time we get real, real close, and we can update those, and we blossom. Yeah, so, and I, and it won't take anywhere. We can, go ahead.
Well, if I might, then.
Sure.
Taxes are a big thing.
Check here. Yep, he's there. We go on to Sheriff's Department next.
Yep. Yeah, like we told everybody, your assessment can double, and your taxes can remain exactly the same. If everybody's budget doesn't change, of course, yeah, yeah. And, uh, that's what we're kinda looking at. Again, but you guys understand everybody's budget, and just, if like nine small budget compared to the county, there's always something ready to come along. Got, you know, wants our money more than we do, you know, so, um, just keep our fingers crossed, um. Uh, you're still capped. Your, your mill levy is still capped, so there, you can't just, like, like I said, we can double it, but I think there's, normally there's a three or five percent cap on most of your budget, so you couldn't do it if you wanted to, actually. Uh, I mean, there's ways around it, Bruce can explain all the legal terms.
Brenda can. Growth in CPI, kind of your governor.
Growth in CPI, we're pretty much capped.
We're opt out.
Yeah, and that's it.
That's it.
So unfortunately, we may be looking at another, this could be a hike next year.
And isn't it true, Tim?
We, we, we took a real conservative approach, and we never even got to the eighty-five number, and that was where they're adding about thirty percent. I'm just hoping things will level out, so whether it come down, or could come down to our assessment, let us keep chasing it.
I haven't, I haven't heard. But then the state will come in and, and apply the factor to get you back to, to one, right?
It doesn't make any difference. We're gonna get right at the eighty-five level no matter what.
And, and this is just an aside, quick like, but in terms of new appraised properties, you're following state law that you're compelled to do by your appraisers' oath and so forth, right?
Yeah.
To, to use those approaches, so, I mean, state law could change to allow you to have some flexibility, but otherwise, kinda boxed in, is that fair?
As it is right now, yeah, there's not a lot of latitude like they typically do.
Sheriff is on the line.
We're going to Sheriff. He's on the phone.
Yeah, that eighty-five percent of the county was.
It was our twenty-three.
Just under that, uh, and that was on the thirty percent high. To actually get what the state wanted, I would have had to raise everybody in the county about sixty percent.
Two eleven.
And it.
Sixty-two, ten.
Sixty, to get to what the state wanted, I didn't think that was.
Going to jail right after.
And I'm kinda conservative, I was kinda, I just think it's gonna come down.
Yep, and dispatch.
Unity will quit, but right now I.
Two-ten?
Keep our fingers crossed. You guys, but thank you. If you have any other questions, while I'm in screaming at me.
Yep.
Sheriff, com check, com check.
Brian, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I think he, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think he was gonna defer basically to any questions, is that right, Sheriff?
You're kinda cutting in and out a little bit there, Bruce. What was that?
Sheriff, I mean, Sheriff, did you plan on making, have any comments, or were you gonna try to defer to questions?
No, I think I'm doing pretty good, uh, I can, I can make a, a, kind of a hybrid of a presentation if the, if that works out for the board.
Sure. Go ahead.
I'll start with two, I'll start with two-ten. Two-ten, uh, is really pretty straightforward, and as Commissioner Flanagan pointed out last time, we've got about twenty, excuse me, about twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars that it's added to the budget, uh, for the sole purposes of moving equipment and getting it, uh, put back together in a new facility. Um, were it not for that, the subtotal in, in the category two would be at sixty-one thousand nine fifty, which is actually the lowest amount that we've seen in that category in the last fifteen years. So we've, uh, I think done very well to be frugal in that regard. Some of the wisdom in, um, putting those moving fees in there. Uh, if you were to consider that the, uh, the cost of our new facility elevated somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-six percent, then you can see the volatility that exists in our soft costs, because while the hard costs, uh, realize that type of an increase, the soft costs have not. And, uh, so we need to try to be as thrifty as we can with those soft costs, certainly. Um, but if we can defer any expenses, um, in this way, it just, uh, gives us more flexibility to deal with, uh, uh, what is likely to be a diminished amount of funds, uh, to get things moved over to the building. So that's the reason that I put it in the budget. You know, in addition, it also just gives you the, uh, opportunity to overview what actual costs to move are estimated at being. So that's where we're at, eighty-six thousand four fifty. It would have been sixty-one thousand nine fifty by way of comparison. So I think, uh, we're doing quite well now. If the board decides, although I would recommend against it, but if the board wants that twenty-four thousand six hundred removed, uh, it certainly can be. Any questions?
Commissioner Diber.
Yeah, Brian, based on the construction schedule, that money wouldn't be needed till twenty-twenty-five.
Well, uh, not exactly true, because they're moving in according to the, the calculations on, the, uh, numbers they've given would be roughly August nineteenth of twenty-twenty-four, uh, but that doesn't, that, that's not exactly the date that we would have to spend the money. I'm sure you can appreciate that there is a date out there that we cannot yet identify when those costs are gonna have to start being incurred.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said twenty-twenty-five. I meant twenty-twenty-four. So, you know, with a seven hundred day plus construction schedule, I don't think that this money will be spent till twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-three?
Four.
Not until then.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying?
Because we have the first six months of twenty-twenty-four to move in, and they won't finish it till September or October of twenty-twenty-four.
It's, it's very possible, yeah, uh, no debate there whatsoever. It's great. I'm sorry?
Uh, we, we, Sheriff, Randy just asked if we've seen kind of, well, we've seen like a draw schedule, so we have an idea kind of of what their progress looks like, right?
That's correct. But, uh, I'll add in there, at the time we made the budget, uh, that hadn't all been decided yet. So again, it's, it's purely up to you, but now, now you have opportunity to see exactly what some of those costs are gonna be.
Well, I think, I think if we leave it in, then they go back into general fund, and we have it to next year anyway, it wouldn't be doubled, double taxing for them, so. I just wanted to be clear on what he was doing. I, I think you leave it in for now, but.
Any other questions? Any other questions for dispatch? You wanna move on to two-eleven? Sheriff.
Department two-eleven, uh, is also fairly straightforward this year. Um, firstly, I direct your attention to Sheriff Travel. We did an increase Sheriff Travel. Um, about sixty-three hundred dollars. The, the reason for that, uh, I would assume is obvious to everybody, at fifty percent of the year of twenty-twenty-two, we spent fifty-three point three nine percent of our twenty-two budget. Uh, or we're projecting that we're gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood about roughly forty-four, hundred and thirty-five dollars over budget by the end of the year. Uh, so that sixty-three hundred just gives us a little bit of a cushion, uh, not much of a cushion, mind you, but I think, I think that'll do just fine for us. In Sheriff Utilities, uh, there's an increase there, excuse me, of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and sixteen cents. Now, this begins the introduction to, uh, the Axon program that we would request to buy. Uh, that eighty-seven hundred dollars is directly linked to the way that system functions, uh, with the cloud storage, uh, that we'd like to go to. And then next, in, uh, in regards to the, uh, Sheriff Computer Supply, that, that has increased, uh, roughly nineteen thousand eighty-six dollars, and that's specific to the Axon body worn cameras that we would hope to, uh, purchase. This is a completely new system, uh, to us. As I said before, uh, we have ridden the L-three train as long as we can. That was our, our previous provider. Um, we had gone to the extent of buying old, uh, used equipment from other local agencies to, to milk that system along as long as we could, and it's at its life's end. Axon is a system, it's gaining notoriety in South Dakota. It's probably one of the prominent camera systems out there, and as I discussed with the board before, camera systems are a part of modern day law enforcement and really not something that we can any longer do without. So we need to maintain those systems. And then down in Sheriff's, uh, Critical Care, uh, this is almost impossible to try to guess where we're going to be. Absolutely no control over this. This is driven by state law, specifically what that, this is, is any victim of a sexual assault in Lawrence County, regardless of where that is in Lawrence County, uh, now has the, the statutory right to go and get medical treatment, and that, the cost for that treatment and those exams falls to the county. I can tell you that in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted three thousand dollars, and by year's end, we'd spent seven thousand seven hundred and six dollars. So, uh, it really can be all over the charts, anywhere from twelve hundred to nearly eight thousand. Um, and we have no idea where we're gonna end in, in any given year. Uh, eight thousand, I think, gives the county the opportunity to sufficiently plan for what has been our historic high year.
Commissioner Diber, hang on.
Do you have any new vehicles budgeted?
Uh, yes, that's next on the line.
Okay, sorry.
So in accordance with moving into a new facility, we've talked about this, uh, for several years now, we'd have to add one deputy to what we call the cat team. And, uh, the realization of an extra vehicle would reveal itself in capital assets. Vehicles, uh, have really become difficult to try to gauge in terms of the cost and the trade-in value. Historically, we've done very well. Last year, uh, well, actually would be this year, we fell four thousand dollars short. Uh, so the budgeted or requested one-seventy-nine would be to, uh, trade in three vehicles and purchase four. Next in, uh, capital assets is revealed the, uh, Axon in-car camera system. And, uh, this is revealed, and it's a, both the body worn camera and the, uh, in-car cameras are on a five-year contract. So the amounts reflected are amounts that we would have to pay each year. By way of an example, to purchase outright, the Axon in-car camera would cost the county a hundred and thirty-one dollars, I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. So, uh, we opted to request the, uh, five-year payment plan at twenty-seven four. So, uh, we opted to request the, uh, five-year payment plan at twenty-seven four.
Keep going.
Any, yeah, any questions in two eleven?
I see none.
Two thousand and, I'm sorry, uh, Department two twelve. There are some, uh, increases in salary reflected, that's, uh, the addition of a deputy at eighty-seven thousand five twenty-six. Because of the position that that deputy would fill, um, it's budgeted as a full year. Uh, I would request that, that regardless of the actual date of moving into the facility, that we'd be allowed to add that deputy as soon as possible at the, uh, the turn of, uh, next year. The reasoning for that is it takes about a year to get a deputy up and running. Uh, just to be a patrol deputy and it takes another six to seven months to get somebody up and running on the cat team. So by the time we got somebody hired and got everything shifted around, we'd be awful close to a move-in date. However, uh, the salary also reflects, uh, adding at the halfway point of the year, uh, two, uh, cooks. And, uh, we could certainly defer that, I have no objection to it. There's an advantage in trying to get people up and running, trained and ready to go. But I don't estimate that we need any more than about six months prior to moving in, in order to accomplish that. So there's some flexibility there, uh, for the board.
These are gonna be straight cooks, right?
Yes, they are. Uh, interestingly enough though, just as things would have it, we had hoped to save a fair amount of money by making that distinction between cook and corrections officer. But with, uh, the advent of all that's going on in our society presently, uh, cooks wages have really taken a jump. So there's not gonna be a savings revealed as what we had once hoped. Um, still a savings nonetheless, but not like we had hoped.
Any questions on jail from anyone? Mr. Sleep.
He's got, uh, two, uh, cooks as half-time, I guess. How many do you have now, just one that does, uh, more than one thing, alright?
Did you hear that, Brian?
I couldn't hear it all, no.
Um, Richard was asking, right now, what do you presently have in the jail as far as cooks?
Right now, we have two cooks. Um, but they, they also function as corrections officers. But, uh, that, that, uh, system will not serve us, uh, in the new facility.
So we all have to, um, the correction part of their job will be changed, uh, uh, you're gonna move two cooks up from down here up to the new jail and, and they will just have cook duties.
Well. No, so the, uh, the plan is because of our assessed staffing minimums, uh, in the new facility, the, the existing cooks will be, uh, no longer cooking, but rather functioning fully as corrections officers. And then we'll have to add two cooks, uh, exclusively for that detail.
Thank you. So Brian, this is Randy, what I heard is we could defer to thirty-five thousand in wages and the thirty-six thousand in wages for another year and still figure mold.
Absolutely.
It's a two-ten, uh, half-time cooks.
Absolutely true. The only other thing that I point out, uh, two other things in, in, uh, two twelve would be jail board of prisoners. At fifty percent of the year, we had fifty-four point nine nine percent of our budget, I calculated in May and, uh, came up with end-of-year expenditures at about seventy-seven thousand two oh four. Those are things we really have very little control over that'll put us at about forty-seven hundred dollars, almost forty-eight hundred dollars over budget. That's just because of the rise in food costs that, uh, nobody could have predicted. So, uh, calculating that in with about a five point one three percent margin is how I came at an eighty-two thousand dollar figure. I think that's, I think it's solid, I think that's where we need to be. Uh, it's neither lofty, uh, nor will it short us unnecessarily. Then the last thing I'd make mention of in, uh, two twelve would be, uh, jail blood tests. We have really seen a spike, um, in the cost there. We've been, uh, trying to slowly bring the cost up over a period of years and we just continue to, to, uh, end behind the mark in two thousand and twenty. We budgeted forty-five thousand and we spent fifty-seven. Uh, so we're just gonna try to make a little bit of a bigger jump than what I'd normally like to, but we at least need to be breaking even, uh, in that line item. And that's what I have for two twelve.
Okay, go ahead Randy.
In two twelve, under capital assets, you have a washing machine and dryer for twelve thousand nine hundred. Is that regardless of the move?
Yeah, that's regardless of the move. Um, it, it's specifically identified as such, but, uh, it isn't always that, that we spend the money on. Sometimes it's a dishwashing machine or, or, uh, other major appliances.
Anyone else have questions for jail?
Two fourteen is really pretty straightforward, it's a self funded program. Uh, we've spoke at this, um, at some length before, so I won't go into the great detail. But basically the hike there is in anticipation of getting our numbers up to a point where it's, uh, fiscally responsible and appropriate to open up a second kiosk down in the Spearfish area. So, uh, I had hoped that we would be there already, uh, but there's a number of contributing factors involved in it. Then our numbers just aren't there, so I'm not ready to make the move. And that's all I have, uh, there's nothing to be added for two nineteen, we budgeted nothing there. So the next that I would address is, uh, two two five.
Go ahead.
So there's been a number of things going on, uh, through two two five over the last year. We've been in kind of a five-year cycle of upgrading our equipment. We, we, uh, typically take good care with Greg and, and, uh, Western Communications of our equipment. Then we get it, we get every life, or every amount of life out of it that we can. But, excuse me. So in regards to, uh, supplies, um, while the number from the previous year looks like it's come down, it, it has not come down, uh, to a level that would be normal in any other situation. Once again, there are about forty-one thousand nine hundred and five dollars built into the budget for moving expenses. Now this again is money that, you know, the board, uh, felt appropriate, although I would advise against it, we could take the money out. Um, and that would see a reduction of, uh, that category two dollar from ninety-nine thousand nine hundred down to fifty-seven thousand nine nine four, which is where I would be, uh, happy in the average year. Um, but with everything that we've got going on, I highly recommend that we leave it as it is. Um, as it is requested. The next that I would point out would be, uh, in capital assets. Um, we are replacing what's called our nine hundred blank. And, uh, that has with it a, a, uh, price tag of approximately forty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which will be reimbursed to the county through a Homeland Security grant. So it's, uh, Brenda has a term for it, I can't think of it right now, but we budgeted it that way, but that money comes back to the county or, or the lion's share of that money comes back to the county. That's what I have, two two five.
Questions, anyone? Okay. I think that finishes us up with you Brian, hope you get better.
Take care Brian.
Thank you very much.
Wanna take like a three-minute break or something?
Sure Alan, now he's tired of presenting.
You're right Brandon, they, they, the Fed did hike the rate by three-quarters of a percentage point, seventy-five basis points. Yep.
I started getting the day trading, so I started watching that.
Looks like the last time interest rates were this high, or inflation was this high, excuse me, inflation was this high was about nineteen eighty-three, somewhere in there, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I did forget one item that's, uh, very important to us at the sheriff's office. So when I have opportunity, I'd like to just take about two more minutes of your time.
Go ahead, Bob's out of the room.
Brenda.
Brenda and Bob are gone, but go ahead.
I'd like to speak just a moment, uh, in regards to one of our, um, one of our staff. She's a vital member of, of literally all that we do over at the sheriff's office. She's my administrative assistant to anybody that has, over the last two or three years, served on committees, um, in regards to this new facility. I've had but a snapshot of her value to the county and her value to me, uh, as the elected sheriff. What I have in my pay scale remains, uh, a single imbalance and that is the amount of money that she makes when compared to, uh, the amount of work that she does. What's been added to her job description in regards of, uh, planning for a new jail and ultimately moving into one. Uh, her job will increase significantly. Uh, she takes care of the billing of about five and a half million dollars and, uh, does so one penny at a time, right along with me. And, uh, what we're asking for is to put her into a different pay scale. Over a period of time, she would see increases, but, uh, in terms of the first year increase, it amounts to a fifty-seven cent per hour raise, which, uh, while appropriate for our overall wage bill, I think is just a steal on our part. Um, and so I'd, I'd, uh, request with the greatest amount of respect that the board give serious consideration to allowing me to reclassify her in the pay scale.
So Sheriff Brenda just walked back in the room and you're talking about Shelley Drago, correct?
That's correct.
Is, is the information that you talked about anything different than what's been presented, or is this something new that we need to explain to Brenda?
Nope, it's exactly what's being, uh, has been presented and Brenda's well into it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, hope you get better.
The only thing that I struggle with.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute this for now for anybody that's listening there, kinda offline, are you offline?
Offline.
Pass them around.
Oh, thank you.
Eighty Quail Party.
So what Brenda's printed off here represents the current five percent increase, and I realize that that's not forgiven, but I also proposed in the next year project to change the grade on five different employees, which results in an increase, John Day, and Diane, James Burnett, Jeff Harper, Mike Nagl, and Cory Sheeler. This moves them up from a grade one to a grade two in the pay scale. So there's those, those gentlemen, even after more than five percent increase.
And then that's reflected in this.
That is correct.
Yep, it is reflected in this, in this printout that she's prepared. So they, and the rest of it, the insurance, the retirement, dental insurance, Brenda's calculated that. That's one thing that I really have to admire with Brenda and her system here as far as, as the department head, I don't have to worry about. She plugs in the numbers, hits the button, and we write the checks, and you got the printout.
She writes the checks.
She writes the checks.
How about the utilities? See, that's going up by levels, you know, there's one raised, right, with twenty-five thousand, twenty?
Utilities?
Pounds per day, you're talking about, Richard? Seventy-five thousand?
And twenty-one, forty-eight thousand, and eighty-four thousand. R and D utilities have been seventy-five thousand ever since I first started here ten years ago. We've never changed those utilities. Oh, yeah, maybe Alan's, maybe it was forty-eight there, forty-one.
Well, that's the spent amount.
Spent amount, yeah.
So here to date, we're, he's spent thirty-one thousand, and we're not quite, we're not quite six bucks yet, so it'd be up at sixty.
Sixty-three, about four.
Well, that's a lot. Well, that's been a very weird year. But the seventy-five thousand that I requested, that was past the same, it's been for the last ten years. I have not changed the utilities as far as requesting utilities. So if you want to go into the, more line item, but radio maintenance, it's forty-five hundred, I left that the same, exact same as last year and the last ten years. Gasoline, or tires, we left that the same, fifty thousand. Gasoline, we have, obviously, we have to, we've plugged in thirty thousand dollars more for gasoline. I don't know whether the prices are going to stay where they're at, or not. They're going to come down.
It came down a little bit just last week.
Well, they're slowly coming down. But we did increase, or I did increase that by thirty thousand dollars. And obviously, we supply gas to all the county vehicles, so the more, the more county vehicles, we pay for the gas, then the other departments reimburse us for the gases, gas. The bill gets paid on the highway. Diesel fuel, I upped that to fifty, I upped that to fifty-five thousand dollars over the last year. Oils and grease, nanofreeze stayed the same. Hot mix, cold mix, crack sealing stayed the same. Engineering services and testing stayed the same. Gravel, because the price of gravel keeps going up, I estimate a quarter, twenty-five cents a ton every year, I raised that. We have been short on gravel, budget on the gravel line item in the past, raised that to twenty-five thousand dollars. Shop supplies and tools stayed the same. Cutting edges stayed the same. Metal culverts and box culverts left up the same. Nac chloride, I raised that to ninety-five thousand dollars from last year's budget. Equipment parts and repairs stayed the same. Signs and posts and hardware stayed the same. The biggest increases now, right now, for this asphalt paving projects that I have currently in the five-year plan for next year, that increased five hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars for asphalt paving projects. I want to touch, or I want to bring it to the attention of the board, that we have roughly around a hundred miles, a little less than a hundred miles of asphalt pavement on our road system. Now, given the, I don't know what your thoughts are on, an asphalt pavement, taken care of properly, should last, we should get twenty-five years out of asphalt pavement. But some roads, maybe not. The roads up in the hills with the frost and the snow, it is hard to get them to last twenty-five years, even doing the crack sealing and the chip sealing. Now, this year, in twenty-twenty-two, we are paving one and a half miles for roads. If you take the miles that we have, and if you think we're going to get twenty-five, we should be paving, repaving at least four miles a year. We're falling behind at that rate. I've been trying to do that four miles every year, but in twenty-twenty-two, we're on Oliver Street and West Street, that's one and a half miles. So I, and we have the biggest road that, the Nemo Road, we have eighteen, four miles of the road there, but then getting dire need to be repaved. So what I've done is I broke that up into five segments to try to keep, you know, to get it done within a five-year time period. And the cost of paving, the cost of asphalt oil, has gone up twenty-five, thirty percent over the last couple of years. And I don't think it's going to come down. It levels off, we'll be lucky. So that's why there's quite an increase on the paving projects, the paving. Now, and I realize we haven't finalized the five-year plan, that's entirely up to the board, to keep our asphalt pavements, to maintain them and to keep them in a safe condition anyhow, we should be repaving at least four miles a road, at the minimum, not to mention paving over any existing grounds. So that was a big increase, and then the biggest increase are bridges. Currently have three bridge projects, all these grants that we've received, that's real nice, except for the fact that now they're all coming, they're all going to get built in the same year. So the exact amount, we know the exact amount of the two bridges on the St. Orange Road. The, on, on, uh, bridge number, on project number eleven, on the year twenty-twenty-three, that one, Whitewood Service Road by Wheeler Lumber, that's scheduled to be left here this fall, October and November. And one of the contractors that is going to be bidding on it, he told me that if he gets the job, he wants to start on that this winter. He can have it done before rally next August. But now, if he doesn't get it, if heavy constructors get it, there's a possibility that the thing might not get done.
Are they going to detour that one, Alan, or does it close it?
There will be a detour. So that, and we don't know what the bid price is, and we did the forty percent on that to get the big grant. So that eight hundred thousand there, you know, it could be more than that once the bids are.
Wasn't the original engineer's estimate about one point two?
Well, when we originally started.
Exactly. Well, we started that, one point two-five, when we first got, wanted to build the road in Whitewood.
Yep, when we did the bypass, did that, yeah. But the cost of building bridges has gone up even more than the price of asphalt.
Well, and there's so many, so many and so few contractors.
Sure, contractors, that's a problem.
Especially Western South Dakota.
And with the big program, there's, there's a lot more projects going on, and thus the delay from the time you get the grant to the time, even from the time you have the bid opening to the time you get the bridge built, we just, we seen that up here on the Lookout Mountain Bridge.
Good news is we'll know the numbers by the end of the year. The bad news is we'll already have a budget about by then, but that's, that's my idea, what we're looking at next year.
But those two bottom numbers, the one million zero eighteen and the nine ninety-six those are our actual, our actual costs.
That's our fifty percent.
Where do they get on those? When do they start tearing on those?
Well, the one, they could start the one, they want to start on the north bridge, this, maybe possibly at this fall or winter. So the, that was the bundle package, he's doing two bridges, one in these counties, one in these counties. And they finish those up, then it's his intention to start on one of these, possibly at this fall, but the other end would be definitely some time extra.
Were those reflected in last year's budget, those two, Brenda, the Whitewood, or the, uh, St. Orange, bridges from last year?
I've had my five-year plan for that.
But were they budgeted last year on the five million?
Yeah, if they're on the left drive, I can find them.
Yep, he can get them, he can. Alan, I want to ask a theoretical question. You've been on a very good regravel program for years and years and years. Are we at a point that we don't have to regravel that many miles, and we can spend some of that money on paving projects?
Well, we're, I wouldn't say we've been out for years and years and years. We've been on a good gravel and program since we got our belly in the trailer, and we've been able to, to get a lot more roads regravelled for a year than what's, what I had originally planned on. A lot of that depending upon the weather in the fall allows us to call gravel up, you know, in November, October, November. It has given us the opportunity to get those gravel roads regravelled. As far as cutting back, I would not recommend cutting back, but one of the things that we might be able to do in the future, if we don't let them turn completely to mud, instead of having to put four inches of gravel in it, regravel, maybe we could cut that back to three or two inches, and that would cut our, when I figure graveling costs, I'm figuring four inch compacted on twenty-four foot wide surface, twenty-eight hundred tons per mile.
So that's about six inches is what, uncompacted, five, six inches.
Is what we figure on our gravel program.
And then, um, do you anticipate any increases in the mag cost?
And it's just gone up every year since the beginning of time.
And the gravel cost, what I've been doing every year on my estimate on my regraveling plan is I've been allowing a twenty-five cent per ton increase in the cost of gravel. So this year, I had allowed dollars and fifty cents a ton, and that's what we're paying for it out of the four years. Here's the, the plan, the gravel plan. I didn't hand that out today. I don't know if you need it today or not, but, uh.
It was more, it was more an overview than specifics. And then on the North Rochford, Rochford Road, chip seal and fog seal, is that the piece we just paved four years ago?
Yep, we started.
Do you do that every four years?
You, uh, on the new pavement, what I like, what I've been doing is, on the third year, you crack seal it, relative crack seal it, fourth year, chip seal it. And that's how I've got my schedule on my, on my paving, my paving maintenance plan includes a seven year location on the chip sealing.
To help extend that.
To help extend, to get that twenty-five years.
From eighteen to twenty, if we don't, is the theory on that?
What's that?
It's in eighteen to twenty, if we don't.
If you don't, you, you might not, you'd be lucky to get twenty, if you don't be crack sealing, chip sealing.
And the other item is we're six months into the year, and you spent just over a million dollars on a five million dollar budget this year. So are we expecting some big payments coming up next six months?
We still, we still haven't paid, haven't paid anything on the Oliver Street project, and we haven't paid anything on the West Street project. We haven't paid for our share of the ridge yet upon the Lookout Mountain State House.
What was he, Oliver, six hundred and some odd thousand? Six eighty or something like that? It's pretty steep.
It was. I just was wondering which, what we're coming out of. I know the paving comes late here.
The paving comes late. We haven't paid for any of the chip sealing yet. How many more miles to Magwater every year? Well, it's always, we always gain a mile or two every year, it seems like. And one of the other things that we've, we've been doing that we've noticed that really helps is when we put down new gravel, regravel that road, we definitely like to nag it right away with that gravel to stay down.
In place.
So your increase, your increase in your budget is one, is about two point six million, and really that's the bridges.
Well, a lot of the bridges and the paving, yes.
You were committed to this.
Uh, let's see. The drug and alcohol, office supplies and equipment, left that the same. Drug and alcohol testing, that's the same. Travel, left that the same. Utilities, interventions, left that the same. The snow and ice and sand and salt, I got notice, you know, just yesterday or the day before, whether the price of salt's going to go up, obviously, because of trucking. So, but even though I, I got, I anticipated that, I, I did raise that ten thousand dollars over last year. The icing sand, we have that to bid, that was bid out with our annual supplies in the spring, and that did go up as well over the last year, the pricing of the icing sand. Our capital assets right now, and this is another tricky, tricky line item here. Last year, we purchased, we purchased a truck with a box and hoist and plow, and sander, and wing, and the Tahata system, so we can take the box off and pull the belly. Well, the truck was delivered and paid for last fall, but the northern people at Northern Truck and Equipment, they just finished up with the setting up of the truck with all the other equipment. So there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar bill, I think maybe some.
On the day, yeah.
On the day, that should have been paid out of, was budgeted for last year's equipment budget, but since it was, I'm honored to won't let me pay for things ahead of time once they're delivered.
Kind of mean that way.
I know, she's a stickler on that. So now we have, and plus, now we have tobacco that we ordered last, what, October, November, and it's still not been delivered either. And they're saying, what, November? So there's a possibility, if that gets, keeps getting, I may not have that bill for that thing by the end of this year as well.
And the plow for the truck.
And the plow as well, the plow's still not here. We ordered the plow for, we ended up having to switch dealers on it, making a lot of the plow, so. So this year, what we budgeted for is a new mowing tractor.
You're going to retire the old John Deere?
The old John Deere's kind of.
Not the one you mowed the sign with?
Yeah, that's the, that's the sign mowing.
When, when it says twin mower, is that?
One for sign?
Pull, pull behind, no, is that pull behind or a mower on each side?
One mower on the side and one on the leader of the tractor.
You drive in the ditch, you drive on the shoulder and then have one off, on the side of the.
You can get the signs with the arm one.
You can get it twice.
Yep, we can really mow all that down fine.
It's thirteen feet wide in one path.
You know, Alan, nobody would have even known about it if it hadn't have been right there at mine.
Well, I drove past it going up Sand Creek the one day, went, oh, gee, it was twisted.
What did you operate?
And I just teased him about it. I just sent him a picture with.
He said, operator needs glasses. Well, of course, I already wear a slap. And this is off, this is our retired, or somewhere hell of a guy.
No, he runs the cat one.
Yeah, he runs the cat one, the newest.
Yeah.
The new mowing tractor, which is, you know, eleven years old, this one is.
Is it eleven years old already? Wow.
The old one is twenty years, ninety-four. So, second row, twenty-eight years, twenty-nine.
That's the Alice Fiat one, is that that?
No, I said John Deere.
Sixty-four hundred miles. So where did you hide your track hole in there?
There's no track hole anywhere.
I'll bring it up one more time.
We just keep renting it.
Yeah.
No notice.
Yeah, I saw the bill.
Did you rent a bill?
Yeah, I always had the bolt that I say, yeah, look at that, where's that track hole again?
Oh, we just rented one last week. We had it for a whole week, didn't we? We follow this one up, rent one again next year to put that, put that ridge in down the panel.
If we follow this one, we rent one again next year to put that, put that bridge in down the panel. We're gonna have the guy.
I'm gonna have the contractor that's interested.
Be nice to watch him.
You will not, you'll be fishing. Quiet, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. With the engineering services and testing, with three bridges and chip seal and paving projects, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, gonna cover that?
Nope. But I know, I, I hate raising engineering budgets.
So is it in the, where's it, in here?
Well, the total, hopefully, the total of the project, uh, it might be covered in the total of the project.
Project, okay, 'cause that would've been built in.
Right.
So, so you defer some of that to the projects and some of the rest of it's for new projects?
The end, the only engine, like, they just finished up the, uh, remember the two bridges we hired them to do? Rose just finished that up, now we're gonna have a T S and L here next week they wanna have. Those two bridges were a hundred and four thousand dollars, just to view their client.
Administration, yeah, oh my gosh.
So I paid, I'll pay for that bill out of that line I got. So are we not gonna be building the bridges for a year, two years? I got them for two years out. So I, I guess I put them in for you.
Well, I just thought that with all those projects, that might be a little like twenty twenty-five.
I guess I put those two bridges in for close to twenty-five. So if you don't have, uh, things come to fruition in the bridge, uh, building and that, why you got, uh, extra money that you can catch up on your stuff, except if you're high and then you don't have to. Cash. Um, I mean, the general function, I'm trying to say. Well, I guess I don't know where the extra money will be. If we build, if we build all, if we do everything on this list, and we spend everything that is in my current budget proposal, uh, that is actually more, uh, this, this nine point seven million dollar budget will not cover it. I mean, it's almost ten. I think I figured out everything would be around ten million, four hundred dollars in cash.
It could be short.
So, uh, Brenda, what's our tax request currently for this department?
Three million, seven hundred thou, seven hundred thousand, one hundred, I believe it is.
And last year, it was eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, 'cause we cut all that out, and so we probably shouldn't have done that. I probably should've left a little bit more in there, because right now, what, by requesting what I'm requesting leaves him with zero percent cash.
Yep, nothing to period.
So, yeah, so, I mean, and given, you know, if he doesn't spend his whole budget, you know, this year, you know, which obviously, it sounds like he's going to.
At the end of the year, will we, if we pay all this, will we have anything in return?
So, three, yeah, three.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's a lot of-
Well, we still have like four more bridges on grants that could pop up in the next couple of years.
Yep, yep.
Well, they're listed, uh, if you look, if you look on the twenty twenty-four, uh, we have some preservation grant down on the Nemo Road, we got the, the big grant awarded to us. And the thing, the bad thing with these preservation grants is we have to pay everything upfront.
And reimburse.
Then we get reimbursed, unlike the new construction ones. They just pay the front, the eighty percent of whatever percentage.
So that's my question. So these, these right here, these two nineteen, twenty nineteen grants, this is a hundred percent? Then we'll get fifty percent of this bag?
No, we won't be getting any of that.
This is just, okay, gotcha. Okay, so this is, this is, the, the federal grants, we only have to pay our sec, our part of it.
With bridge rehab, the big bridge rehab.
Those you have to pay a hundred percent.
We have to pay the whole thing.
Thank you for it.
Up front and get reimbursed.
Submit the bills.
So that's like new decky and then-
Yep.
Yep, like the K O E Camp Town Bridge, they have to pay for everything upfront and then submit the bills and give her stuff. You gotta have a budget.
So you go to front of that?
Out of the lessons.
Yeah, next, that would be next year, twenty-four, or twenty-four, right, Alan, twenty-four? The preservation grants are twenty-four?
Uh, the preservation one is in twenty-four.
Thank you.
Along with one bill.
And then there's a new bill on the, uh, on the, uh, Christianson Drive.
Christianson Drive, if you, and that, but that'll be just-
And there's one on Elmore Road.
Elmore Road, that is, uh, yeah.
But those'll only be our part, we have to-
Those are our, our share, yeah.
Front and the whole thing.
Yep.
Now, where, where you have a little bit of wiggle room here is in year twenty twenty-five. Uh, although, project number seventeen and eighteen, right now, we've, you know, we're, we're planning to apply for those rants for those bridges, so.
The two Nemo roads?
The, the two on the Nemo Road.
That application goes in January of twenty twenty-five or before?
It'll be probably in twenty twenty-four.
Is that the construction grant rather than the design grant?
Construction, that'll be for the construction grant, yes, reconstruction. And the good, one of the, they just came back with, uh, those two bridges, right now, what they're, Rose is proposing is we will not have bridges there, they will turn into box culverts. Yeah, yes, which is a lot better deal.
Won't have what happened, happened for us.
But that could also change too, I mean, between now and then, but that's the way it's been.
Don't have a lot of them, it seems like Kentucky kinda has a ton of those big double culverts, just, there's a single one by me.
By the Alcorn turnoff, they're going to, on Acorn Ridge, they put a copper, the city put copper in there.
Decide to turn on the box culvert over that, or they don't have anybody hired that for, uh, who were tired. Well, the, the state, uh, on, on one of those has to be skewed a little bit, and the state does not like skewed on the box culverts. They'll go up to ten degrees on a skew, with a box culvert, anything over that, the state over a bridge. And right now, we're right at that ten, ten degrees skew on one of these.
You have any room for realignment to make sure that stays?
We're hoping that, you know, it can stay with box culverts versus bridges. I don't know if you wanna discuss the five-year plan any, right now, today, I know this is a budget hearing, but the five-year plan does affect your budgeting numbers for this year and for the future.
Put it up in a second. I've got it here.
So the blue was-
It's on the drive, Brendan, on the, for, August meeting.
Are additions to what?
And the yellow are changed. I, I put it in for August, yeah, if you wanna get it.
The yellow are, when I moved from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-two.
It's on the drive, under the August meeting, if you wanna look at, it on the drive.
The blue is not on the twenty twenty-three's plan that you approved on last fall.
But that, uh, Nemo Road one is just part, the next phase of what we're doing this year.
Right.
You put it in a five-year plan because we took it off last year, right?
We didn't, we didn't take it off.
Oh, we didn't pave that one, one point two million, we're gonna move, pave it.
Well, the, you're talking to pave.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't pave it, no.
On the screen. Oh, that's no one overlay, I stand corrected.
And I realize that this increase in, well, that's a what, thirty-some percent?
Well, that's because of the bridges.
But because of the bridges, so. And, and, uh, and, and my budget for twenty twenty-two is actually one little lower than it was for twenty-one. So it, it catches up to-
And you gotta, eventually you gotta do it.
I know, it's, it's not.
Well, we're fortunate, we've got really, really good roads in that county.
A road, but if we're gonna keep them, if we're gonna maintain them, there's reasons for that, it is.
Five-year plan.
They've stayed on top of it.
And fortunately, it's been dollars.
So we have to spend some money, have some money to spend to-
It was about, um-
Anyone else have questions for Alan?
Thanks for the gravel, uh, do you wanna hand out the gravel, so we can take it with us?
Sure can.
I don't wanna talk about it today necessarily, but it'd be nice to review the five-year. That the five-year plan?
Thank you.
Ten year.
We've got five-year.
It's just a gravel.
Oh, I don't have this one yet.
Uh, yeah, that just shows you what roads are scheduled in the next nine years. And obviously, four of those years aren't in the five-year plan.
Yep, I understand. I just like to look at them, so.
No, it's, yeah, and like, you know, with early on, that discussion about five-year plans, nothing's changed. You just get more gravel done, right?
Well, um, we, we-
No, priorities, something's locked down, we don't keep reference.
Thank you.
That does make it easier for, for kind of that road.
You can have some extras, but I think that's just a little bit.
I think Bruce, hey, Bruce, can Alan have another copy?
No.
What do you actually have, Bruce?
I just have a memory.
Yeah, I put mine on my door.
With all last years?
Now you have none.
Well, I, pretty honestly, I go through and take that hospital.
I just add treats.
Thank you, Alan.
Pretty soon, you're gonna have mice and cockroaches and-
How's the cheese doors and?
Everything will-
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
I've heard I've talked to this girl recently. I've, I have a, I have a self, we have a box a long time. And the new one recommends you use the crushed cornmeal things or-
Rather.
Maggots. You know, wow. They get underneath that crushed corn.
Helps your plant population.
I don't have, we don't have trees, but it's more fun. The only other fun we have is the small truck.
A while later, my cold fund.
Uh, the Roden, uh, Roden Bridge Reserve went away.
Yep, all his special funds are gone. He just budgets all under Roden Bridge. He, he-
And that was a requirement from the state, wasn't it?
Nope.
No.
It could, they just, when, I think, when, I don't know if it was when Dick came, that he wanted it to consolidate, and then Alan kinda stayed on the same wavelength, and so we just eliminated those funds. And then, um, so I think it was last year, we, with those last amount of money that was in those funds, we didn't, we didn't levy for them anymore, so, yeah, I don't know if it was back then, Brendan. You might remember more than I do.
It's stuck in there, huh?
I was thinking that, they wanted us to have them, they didn't want us to have them.
Go ahead and say it, Alan.
Wow, yeah, that was, uh-
I guess that's-
And just make the motion.
Actually, I think Connie was in the process of, of they were getting rid of those, they weren't, they, you haven't levied for them a long time, yeah, and they just, just said, look, just get rid of the funds and not put money in them.
There never was a levy when I started with the snow, but there was a little levy in the highway.
A bridge and reserve, yeah, so they, they've stopped, stopped levying in those, in any of those special funds.
Yeah, well, then when we did the wheel time, so.
Yeah, that kinda, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Alan, very much, appreciate it.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go into executive session personnel, I made that motion.
Okay, hold on a second.
Take a second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, same side, thank you, Alan.
Thank you, guys.
Who shut the door for us?
Um, just a second, we got it, um, we got-
You gotta take the-
Going on here. Okay, so who made the motion, Diver, second?
Rosenoff.
One forty-three P M.
Yes.
I don't think we need him to start with, but we will.
Okay, so I got the one forty-three for now. Okay, um, so I got a-